Good evening, welcome to the Pleasantville Village Board Meeting. Today is Monday, January 25. If you are watching live on cable television, we encourage you to call in at 769-1677 with any questions you may have. If you're watching on a replay, don't call, we won't be here to answer. Our next scheduled meeting is a work session on Monday, February 1, and our next regular meeting is Monday, February 8. However, as many of you know, the primary activity of tonight is our public hearing on the proposed franchise agreement from Verizon for FiOS Cable TV. We have a resolution on the agenda for tonight's session, but we've agreed that we will not vote on it tonight, we instead will table that resolution so that anyone who has any further comments has an opportunity to do so. We're going to hold a special session of the Village Board at 8:15 a.m. on Friday, January 29. There'll be a resolution to that effect at the end of the resolutions for the purpose of voting on the Verizon contract. So, we're going to be tabling the resolution to vote tonight and instead voting on Friday, the 29th, the purpose being to digest that which is said tonight, and also to allow anybody else who may wish to respond by email or letter to let us know what they think. So, welcome. As mentioned, the primary activity tonight is a public hearing on the Verizon cable contract, but before we move to that, if anyone had any oral communications on any other subject other than the Verizon, we invite you to come forward now.
Good evening, everyone. Bill Luchia, 386 Bedford Road. I'm here. The mayor and I had a conversation on Saturday. I'm here because I've got a friend of mine who's in the hospital. I think there are a lot of people in the village who have asked the same question that I've asked, and it's a very simple question. How in the year 2010 did we have a police sergeant on the floor of the police station for more than six hours? Simple question. I know it's probably difficult answers, but it's never been publicly acknowledged that this was the case, as far as I know. Nothing I've read, nothing I've seen, has acknowledged the fact that Sergeant Foca was literally on the floor of the police station for more than six hours.
Excuse me, why was he on the floor?
If you have something to say, can you come forward later?
He had a medical issue, and he was on the floor from approximately 12:20 a.m. till we know when the ambulance call was made at 6:20 in the morning. I'll leave it at that. I mean, I just want to get that out in the open. I want everybody in the village, I'd like to hear an acknowledgement at one point that this was the case, and I think that, I mean, I'm getting phone calls, I'm sure you're getting phone calls, all of you, or some of you, that would like to know how this can be.
Okay, well, Bill, I follow up to what I said to you on Saturday, and happy to say this in a public setting. Our first concern, obviously, is for Sergeant Foca, and everybody is pulling for his complete recovery and speedy return. As I think I described for you, at night, the desk officer is alone many times in the police department, and after this incident occurred, we went back immediately, and the chief went back immediately, looked at the policies, which call for the desk officer to be reaching out to the officers in patrol cars, but did not at the time require officers in patrol cars to be reaching out to the desk officer. Obviously, a medical emergency of this kind wasn't anticipated by those policies, those policies have now been changed. Everybody in the department, from the top to the middle to the bottom, is very clear now that there is a requirement that a desk officer be making regular contact with his patrol units, and with a patrol unit to make regular contact with the desk officer in the absence of hearing from the desk officer.
I think it's great, like I said, I'm going to sit down, because I just wanted to make that.
I appreciate that. Anybody else have something to say on a matter other than Verizon? All right. Is there a motion to open the public hearing regarding the proposed initial franchise agreement for cable television service in the village of Pleasantville with Verizon?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Verizon is here tonight, and we will shortly give the floor to them. As many of you in the community are aware, Pleasantville began the negotiations with Verizon for a cable TV franchise in the context of a consortium of a variety of other communities. In the end, Pleasantville split off from that consortium and has continued with negotiations with Verizon over a long period of time. We arrived tonight with a contract that Verizon has formally applied for, copies of it are in the back, if anyone hasn't seen it, is interested in seeing it, copies of it are also available on our website, but we invite Verizon to describe their application to the village, to the community, after which, the board will have some questions, and we'll invite comments and questions from the public as well. We can.
Mayor Shearer, Deputy Mayor Burrard.
I'm sorry, could you bring that down so we can hear you?
Okay.
Is this better? Trustees, good evening. My name is Catherine Gasteyer, and I am the Director of Verizon's Government and External Affairs. It's a pleasure to be here, I must say, after today's unpleasant weather. I'm pleased to see everybody was able to make it, at least from our team and the board as well. On behalf of Verizon and the Verizon employees who are residents and employees here in Pleasantville, thank you for the opportunity to spend just a minute talking a little bit about our process. We're very delighted, thanks to your leadership, to have gotten to this milestone. Your leadership and our collaborative work together has brought us to the point that now we are very close to being able to offer competition for cable TV service here in the village. Tonight you have before you a final cable franchise that will bring the long-awaited TV competition to residents of the village. I know the journey we have taken together has not always been easy. In negotiating nearly 170 franchises in New York, we have learned that the process can be difficult, and we've discovered there is much give and take in a negotiation like this. Yet, in the end, we do feel the interests of both parties do become shaped into a final contract that reflects significant compromise while still advancing important priorities, and that's what we believe we've achieved here with you here in Pleasantville. We have franchise terms that are consistent with the new reality of the cable TV marketplace here in New York. It has become extremely competitive in New York, thanks to FiOS TV, and we feel we have a reasonable agreement that benefits the village and the people who are so important to you, your constituents. Here's what the franchise means for the constituents you represent. Over 300 channels delivered over a fiber connection to the home, more than almost 114 local and national high-definition channels, 15,000 video-on-demand programs available at any time, and finally, the power to bundle the TV service with the fast internet and voice product at affordable prices, that's the advantage of bundling. So, there are many more advantages to FiOS TV, but my point is, by voting yes on this agreement, it opens the door to this new technology for your constituents and brings the TV service available to them. Residents here have told Verizon that this is what they'd like, and we believe that they'll appreciate your bold step to bring them what they're asking for. In closing, you may have heard that in 2010 Verizon is focusing and committing its resources to building out its network and bringing the FiOS TV service to communities where we do have a franchise, and that is accurate. And tonight, we do bring that promise to Pleasantville as well. Upon approving the agreement with Verizon, we will abide by every detail of that agreement and that commitment to build out the service completely to this village. We thank you for establishing this partnership, and I personally do, I've spoken to many of you, and I appreciate your time and interest in working with us. Now, I'd like to introduce Link Janis from our negotiating team, who's available to answer questions, and will detail some of the points of the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the right audio for, loud enough? I hope. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Burrard, and members of the board, as Catherine said, my name is Link Janis, and I work for Verizon in two capacities. More recently, I'm focusing on the franchise service management aspect of my duties, which is basically serving as a liaison between the communities that I serve and Verizon in terms of administering our cable TV contracts. And the other capacity that I work for the company in is to negotiate cable TV agreements. I'd like to echo what Catherine said, and begin by saying thank you to all of you for your time and your consideration during the negotiations process. In particular, I'd like to acknowledge the obvious time and effort that the mayor spent, Trustee Cunningham spent, and Patricia Dwyer spent on the negotiations process on behalf of the village. And with your indulgence before standing for questions, or you're welcome to interrupt me with questions if you have them, I'd like to summarize the main benefits of the agreement that's being proposed tonight between Pleasantville and Verizon. Catherine has noted that under the agreement, Pleasantville residents will enjoy real TV cable choice for the first time. That choice, from our perspective, is Verizon's FiOS TV network, which will be delivered to residents here over the most advanced communications network available to consumers today. I've spent 25 years working in the telecommunications industry, I was a longtime AT&amp;T, SBC, Ameritech, Illinois Bell, went through many iterations employee, and I can remember in 1984, when I first started with the company, looking out a window of the building that I worked in, and seeing Illinois Bell technicians installing fiber optics in the Chicago Loop area, and the company newspaper touting how advanced fiber optics are. That really remains true today. The electronics that are attached to those fiber optics change, but the fiber optics transport system itself is the most advanced way of transporting data, because nothing travels faster than the speed of light. So, it's a very advanced system, and as far as I know, no other company in the United States is installing all fiber optic networks, all the way up to people's residences when they order our service. So, it's really a future-proof type of technology because of the capacity, and because of that capacity, it can carry the 300 channels that Catherine mentioned, and it can carry applications of the future as well, that may be very bandwidth-hungry, but because of the fiber optic capacity, our network will be up to handling those new applications. In addition to that, the benefits of fiber optics itself, which is not to be underestimated, there are many benefits that accrue to the village under the agreement. Adopting the agreement will provide the village with a dedicated public access channel that will originate at the Pleasantville Cable TV studio, a dedicated education access channel that will originate at the Pleasantville High School, and a dedicated government access channel originating at the Village Hall. Those are all provided for in the agreement and in Appendix D to the agreement. The proposed franchise that we're discussing tonight also offers the village an initial educational, well, public educational, educational and government grant totaling $50,000. We often refer to that as a PEG grant, with PEG standing for Public Educational and Governmental. Under the proposed agreement, the village will receive the first installment within 30 days of the agreement's effective date, and under the agreement, the effective date is the date when the Public Service Commission, which is also a franchising authority in the state, confirms the agreement. Our proposed agreement also provides that the village will receive the second and third installments of the $50,000 PEG grant in the third and seventh year of the agreement, subject to its competitive neutrality terms. Additionally, beyond that PEG grant, the agreement provides the village with an annual pay grant, as opposed to the initial pay grant, I know there's some subtleties here that, the initial pay grant is the $50,000, and there's the annual pay grant, which is a per-subscriber grant, and under the agreement, in the first five years, the per-subscriber grant is 40 cents per Verizon subscriber. Then that escalates between years six through 10, and it becomes 60 cents per subscriber. And then finally, since this is a 15-year proposed agreement, it goes to 90 cents per subscriber, years 11 through 15, subject to the competitive neutrality terms. The Verizon franchise also offers the village, and I thank Patty Dwyer for her help here, because this isn't the fun part of preparing an agreement, free basic cable TV service. Patty was very helpful in coming up with the addresses for us. And it offers that at nine locations, as well as one additional location, a recreation site that I understand is to be developed, and it's also subject to the level playing field terms of the agreement. And finally, last but not least, because this is also very important to villages, the agreement offers a 5% franchise fee, as well as a very important, and here I'm going to get into tax code stuff, but we call it a Section 626 waiver. Under this important waiver, Verizon promises not to use the 5% franchise fee payments that we will make pursuant to this agreement as an offset or a deduction against another tax that we pay that also accrues eventually to the village, which is called a special franchise tax. The special franchise tax is based upon real property that we have in the right-of-way, and we pay apparently a considerable special franchise tax, I'm told by our tax people. So, subject to level playing field requirements, we're promising not to take that deduction and not to take the 5%, and reduce the special franchise tax. So, thank you, thank you, though, for listening to this summary, and also thank you again for your consideration and review of the proposed agreement and the work that I know you all have done on it. Your affirmative vote tonight will usher Pleasantville, actually, I understand, I'm sorry, it's not tonight, it's on Friday, hopefully, your affirmative vote on Friday morning, I know, about 8:15 in the morning, will usher Pleasantville into the broadband future, with a guaranteed choice of cable TV providers for your residents, and we look forward to providing that choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
So, our sequence here is initially, the board will ask questions we may have, and then we'll invite any of you to ask questions, we've received a number of comments in written form, and I'll read those into the record. But for starters, why don't we start with any questions our group may have.
I've got a little talking point, because if you've indicated, Link, that you've watched our meetings, so you know that if I get, once I get going, I get scattered, so to keep the topic sort of brief and on point, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just put up a little slideshow that we're going to go through, to go through some of the terms that you talked about, and address some of the issues that we've had, and some of the discussions that we've had, if that's okay with you.
Do you want me to sit down at this point, or stay up?
You can sit down, stand up, be comfortable.
Whatever, how, well, why don't I sit down?
You can sit in the jury box.
I want you to know that there's no...
Shane, can you turn the projector on?
We've used that in many such settings.
I am not going to sit in the jury box. I am not, I...
We have said...
I come with a disclaimer, I'm not an impartial arbiter of facts.
And where were you on the evening of the 14th, Mr. Janis?
Why don't I sit down so that you can do your show, and then I'll be happy to stand back up?
In fact, do we have a mobile mic?
You can walk around.
Okay. All right. Is this on?
It's going to take a minute, Shane.
It's on, and then we have to lower some lights.
It says Toshiba on there.
Did most backlights by the board though?
Can people see?
Well, if you can see pictures of your vacation, are we...
Okay, just, the reason I want to do this is, one, to help the public understand what we're buying into or not buying into here, and to do it in a fairly simple and direct way. As Link pointed out, the cable franchise revenues that the village enjoys are basically two. One is the PEG fee, which Link said appropriately was broken down into two components, and then the 5% franchise fee. The PEG fee is for the public educational government, it makes this presentation both through PC TV and the internet possible. Generally speaking, carriers will pass this through, so you'll see it as an addendum at the bottom of your bill, I believe Verizon intends to do that. Cablevision currently pays $40,000 of PEG fee. They do not, they're operating under a temporary operating license right now granted by the PSC, and they have been for the last four or five years, and as a result, they still pay a PEG fee of $40,000, they have chosen not to pass it through. I don't know why they've chosen to do that, but that was their decision. Prior to going under a temporary operating license, they did pass it through. The franchise fee is customary and ordinary, it's 5% of cable TV revenues, it's paid to the village for the use of its writer's way, it's just a generic, you know, we think of it as commercial tax, and I think it runs about $118,000 this year. So, let's look at the PEG fee for a second, as Link said, it's $50,000, broken into three payments of $16,666.67 in years one, three, and seven. The issue, and as you'll see, I have got some serious issues with this contract and concerns, I want to make them available to the public. The payments, this is the initial PEG payment of $50,000 in three payments, is conditional on the village having a signed and approved contract with the existing providers. Am I accurate in that, Link? In other words, we need to have, the first payment, the first $16,000, isn't conditional, every payment thereafter is conditional upon us having Verizon, or, excuse me, Cablevision signed?
It is conditional on competitive neutrality provision and the imposition of an equivalent obligation upon Cablevision.
So, I guess my question is, the fact that Cablevision's paying $40,000 versus, as we'll see, this, it works out to be about $17,000, is that considered competitive neutrality in Verizon's opinion or not?
It would not be under the current circumstances, because Cablevision is not operating under a renewed agreement, and our contract refers to the imposition of an equivalent obligation in a renewal agreement. So, we would not make the payment until the renewal agreement was effectuated, and I'm obviously now referring to year three, not year one, or year seven.
Right. Year one is payable regardless?
Year one is payable, I believe, within 30 or 60 days, I'd have to look at it...
30 days, I think, is the contract, yeah. Okay. Part two of the PEG payment is the per-subscriber amount, which is 40, the escalating 40, 60, 90, over the 15-year period. That is entirely provisional on us having a competitive neutrality with the existing carrier?
Yes, again, that's the equivalency, an equivalent obligation being imposed upon Cablevision.
So, is it fair to say, then, you've got contracts with Newcastle, Mount Pleasant, that have been in existence for two or three years now, almost three years, with some of these communities, have you been able to, have you paid PEG, the second part of PEG, to any of these communities yet?
In Newcastle, where we have a per-sub, per, you know, annual type of payment, we have not, because Newcastle has not yet engaged in a renewal agreement that would arguably, they haven't engaged in a renewal agreement, so there's really no question, but in other areas, for example, Tarrytown, Irvington, where there is similar language in our agreements to the language in this proposed agreement, and where those two communities have engaged in renewal agreements, we have made the annual payment, which is an accrual of the, you know, X cents per month, per subscriber.
Okay, so the PEG payment, though, is going to be conditional on us somehow trying to last with Cablevision and to get a contract at which they've been hesitant to deal with any community, maybe they've gotten lucky with, I mean, I don't know the particulars of Tarrytown, but I know that the, my understanding is that the surrounding communities here, who you've entered into agreements with in the last three years, none of them have reached an agreement with Cablevision, and so they, none of them have gotten this PEG payment, with the exception of the initial $16,000 PEG payment, none of them have received PEG payments since then, and you've been operating, Verizon's been operating a franchise in those areas?
Well, as, are you referring to...
Call Newcastle, you pick a, Mount Pleasant, Newcastle, North Castle, you know, they're all, Austining, they're all in the same boat.
North Castle has engaged in a renewal agreement, and they did so in 2007, and we are completely current with our payments to them.
Okay, how about Austining?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head.
But we, to get to the $17,000 roughly PEG payment, we need to, we need to reach an agreement with Cablevision, till then, the only thing we can get is this is $16,000, and every payment after that's conditional. That's, I just want to make sure that I understand that and the community understands that.
Just to be clear, that $17,000 is the PEG payment that would be produced if the entire universe of subscribers were covered by this contract?
That is correct.
Verizon's likely share of that, certainly in its early years, is, well, less than half, as it seeks to gain.
Right. That's correct. Yeah, that $17,000 number is if Cablevision and Verizon have signed, so that we receive two payments of $50,000, one from Cablevision, one from Verizon, and then I've basically just prorated that $100,000 payment over the 15-year cycle of the contract. So, okay, the next is the franchise fee and bundling. This is pretty straightforward stuff, because we get 5% of whatever the cable fee is, however, most, and what cable companies do is they receive their revenue through three major sources, we're all aware of, telephone, internet, and cable. While all three services involving the village is right-of-way, we're only allowed to charge a tax for cable. Currently, it's 5%, and the revenue is from that, it's about $118,000. In these contracts, most of these contracts protect the village or the municipality from discriminatory pricing when these services are bundled into either double play or triple play. The usual contractual methodology, it varies, and we've offered up our version, which isn't this, but is to basically say, whatever discount you're going to provide to the triple or double play, you're going to provide that discount prorata over the individual services provided in that triple or double play. Our contract does not have that protection. We've asked for it, and I've given an example here, just a quick example, as to how it could work. Telephone, internet, and cable each cost about $30 individually to buy, the package would cost 90. The provider offers a triple play where the three services are bundled for a year, and offer it a discount of, say, $60. Now, obviously, I'm exaggerating this here for purely the point of what could be, I'm not saying that Verizon would do this, but it is conceivable, if not Verizon, and my issue with this is not necessarily a Verizon issue, but whatever contract terms we sign as a village, we then have to live with them with whoever wants to come in and provide these services, and our Cablevision contract, which expired four or five years ago, was in existence for 10 years, we had four providers in that 10-year period. So, we need to protect the village, in my opinion, against, not necessarily Verizon doing this, but somebody else coming in and doing this. The provider could come in and contend that internet and telephone cost $30 a piece... The provider could come in and contend that Internet and telephone cost $30 apiece of the $60 discount, and they were giving the cable away, the video services or the video service away for free. This would severely and negatively impact our $118,000 revenue. And, Link, you and I have had a lot of discussion over this. Do you want to enlighten us a bit further, the community a bit further, in terms of Verizon's stance on this? This is in most contracts of our surrounding neighborhood, our surrounding neighbors.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond.
That's what it's all about.
Thanks. The current agreement that we're proposing does address bundling, unlike, you know, as you pointed out, Trustee Cunningham, the incumbent agreement. And unlike many incumbent agreements, we do address bundling. And, just so I'm not talking too much lingo here, bundling has become a marketing phenomenon where telephone service, Internet service, cable TV service, now even wireless service will appear on somebody's bill. And what our agreement, our proposed agreement states, in effect, is that Verizon is subject to various accounting rules, from the FCC to the State Commission. The State Commission has exclusive domain over those accounting rules. They prohibit communities explicitly from prescribing different accounting of revenues. And what we commit to in the agreement is that our, you know, application of the discount and how it's reflected in calculating the 5% fee will track how we record our revenues on our books. Okay. So we're not going to have, and I know you're not suggesting this, so I'm not trying to be dramatic or anything, but just as an assurance to the public, we're not going to have one set of books for the franchise fees and one set of books prescribed by the FCC and the State Commission. Everything's going to line up, and that's an important, you know, that's an important assurance. Now, with respect to Trustee Cunningham's point about the possibilities that a company could take here in terms of pricing, again, this is something that's kind of been overtaken by the Federal Communications Commission because they have basically said, according to Maria Silveira, who is with me and is our counsel tonight, she's tutored me, I hope well, well, sometimes not the best student, but she has tutored me in terms of what has gone on here with the rules. And what the FCC has said is that when we have effective competition, when there are two providers in a market, and what that means is that each cable company in that market has pricing freedom. And that's basically what the dialogues we've had on the telephone back and forth have been about. Verizon really does insist at this point that we have to have marketing freedom to package our discounts in any way that the market demands. And, you know, I know that there are agreements that we had earlier in New York, not so many in other states, but there are many, many, many agreements with the language that we have proposed here. And I have never, as a contract administrator, franchise service manager, I told you at the beginning of this, that's my other hat, I have never had a complaint from a community about this. Now, you may say, well, communities probably don't even know what's going on, so how could they complain? Well, actually, that's not true because every quarter, we will supply you with a brief report, as provided for in the proposed agreement, outlining what the revenues have been by category and showing you how the franchise fee was calculated. So it's not like something that we can just sort of get away with. So, that's, I hope that assures you.
Let me just add, for the record, that, as you know, that this has been an issue for many of us and an issue that Verizon was unwilling to address in terms of the contract. We have sought the advice of the PSC in this regard, and it's the advice of the PSC that neither the state nor the federal requirements are particularly protective of our specific issue in this regard, and their advice is that as much clarity as possible be built into the original agreement, so.
And, yeah, and again, the issue for me is not necessarily a Verizon issue in this instance. It is that whatever, this level playing field concept, which basically says, whatever contract we give Verizon, somebody else can basically come in and assume the same contract and same terms. It gives the community very little ability to choose which providers they want, as long as those providers meet a certain criteria. They then can come in and take whatever contract terms we have given Verizon. And it's fair to say, I think, that in the next 15 years, who knows what the landscape looks like, but in my opinion, I think that we should be as protective as we can. And if this is something that you don't intend to do anyways, so it's of little value to Verizon, it's of big value to Pleasantville. Why we can't agree on some, you know, terms that provide us with that long-term protection, well, not prohibiting you from doing anything that you want to do is, you know, is something that, you know, I find a mystery. But that's, you know, that's one of the issues that they think is, you know, out there. The other is, and you make a good, you allow me to segue, in terms of the annual, or the quarterly, I believe, description of business or the amount, or makeup of your franchise, we have no ability to collect any reimbursement for audit expenses if the village feels an audit is warranted. I completely understand that. I wouldn't want to pay it either if I was a company. Why do I need to be bothered with some village that wants to harass me with audits here and there? However, an audit is not without precedent. We were involved in an audit through our cable consortium several years ago that found that Cablevision had made a mistake, had engaged in an error in their calculations and owed the consortium quite a bit of money. So it does happen. You know, my thought is, at the very least, and something that I'd like you guys to consider, at the very least, I don't want, I'm perfectly willing for the village to take a risk and do an audit if we feel one is necessary. That's our fiduciary responsibility. I guess what I would ask you guys to consider is if it reveals an error or results, the audit results in a payment that you owe us, that you would agree to pay a portion of our audit expenses. If there is nothing owed, if there were no mistakes, if it was a clean audit, we pay the expenses. Again, this is as much to protect the village, not that I'm anticipating there to be any issues with Verizon, although, I'll leave it at that, not that I expect there to be any issues with Verizon. Again, I think the village needs to be in a position where it can protect itself against other providers of video services down the road who may not keep their books and records as clean as Verizon, or who may have a computer glitch somewhere along the line that doesn't get caught and results in an error, that then, you know, we need to feel like we can engage in, and not give away the entire cost of gathering back taxpayers' money through the actual expense of the audit. So, you know, again, I'm throwing out a solution to this particular issue, which, again, I'm hoping isn't any financial burden on Verizon's part if they do what they say they're going to do, and certainly, the village bears the risk of any audit that they would request and would keep those down to, I can assure you, as long as I'm here, it would be, you know, there wouldn't be any nuisance there, but I throw that out for your consideration. I don't know if you have a comment, but certainly, I'd like you guys to at least consider that.
Okay. Just a brief comment. As we talked about, and I wanted everybody to be aware of this, as an alternative to that, you can go to the Public Service Commission and ask for a desk audit if you're ever concerned that any cable TV provider is not accurately calculating gross revenues and the 5%. We do provide the brief report, which should give you some level of assurance, and the contract contains doors in it for gaining access to information easily and inexpensively. As a contract administrator, I have, most of the agreements that I administer have not been subject to any kind of an audit, but I've had some communities in New York and elsewhere that have come to me and said, and written me a letter, a written Verizon letter, and, you know, I pass it on to our financial people, and then we, you know, we provide the information. And it doesn't seem to be a particularly complicated or difficult process. So, the way your contract is now, which is the way, the only contract that I really have to propose to you tonight and on Friday, is, does give access to information to you freely under Section 6, franchise fee provision, and Section 7, which I think is appropriately entitled Open Books and Records, or some such title as that. And there are provisions and easy ways in there to gain access to information, and then there is the PSC.
Another concern that sort of cropped up, and I had, actually, this will be new to you, but hopefully not one that's extraordinarily controversial. Our school district extends beyond the bounds of the village district. In early in negotiations, some four years ago or three years ago, we had brought that to Verizon's attention, saying that, right now, our educational channel doesn't reach the full viewership of the school district. And Verizon made some claims that they could, they had a very flexible system with nodes and whatnot that they can turn on and turn off pretty easily, and that they could, in all likelihood, encompass our entire school district so that they could see the educational channel. Is that still the case?
You know, I don't know what the boundaries, I'm sorry, of your school district are in relationship to the boundaries of our wire centers. I will say this, that our contract does provide for an educational channel, which was negotiated. I know originally Verizon, I think there was a misunderstanding in our part, and we came in and offered you three channels on a tape playback basis where you would send this media and we would play that back.
Right.
And that was not really meant, that was a misunderstanding, I think, on our part, and we came back very quickly, I think, and offered the three dedicated channels.
I have a different interpretation what happened there, but that's, we'll leave it at that.
Okay. If I'm mis, I was just going to say, I was going to do a disclaimer.
Just so the audience knows, Catherine and Link are the first people that we have had contact with, actually, who work at Verizon. I've met them both for the first time tonight, and met them over the phone in this three-year journey. Catherine, I think we met eight months ago on a phone call. Actually, Catherine came in, I'm sorry, you came in for one meeting. Link, we just met. And part of the issue that we've had as a village is that we've never talked to Verizon before. We talked to their representatives. Their legal team was outsourced, their negotiating team is outsourced, and so while it's been characterized as a long sorjurn, our sorjurn with Verizon has been really through their hired representatives, not actually Verizon itself. So, you know, hopefully, you know, and I know that, I know that you guys have the contract and it's here. The frustrating part, from our standpoint, is that the only sort of headway that we actually made, despite numerous requests over many, many months to speak to somebody at Verizon, is that the only time we even got any movement whatsoever, and I will say it's, in my opinion, been minute, but anyways, at least helpful movement has been through contact with actual Verizon people. So.
I hope my explanations have been helpful.
They have, but helpful, yes. It'd be more helpful if you could see things more our way, but helpful, yes.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, I'm sorry, you know, I'm sorry that, I mean, I think I could feel a little bit what you're saying when I, in my own life, when I try to deal with the companies that I have to deal with, from my perspective as a consumer and a business person. But the reason that I was picked to be, to follow John Harrington, who was our consultant, was because I am assigned to be your franchise service manager, I hope not optimistically, in anticipation of a positive vote on Friday. Because I think the thought, the feedback that we were getting from John and from the attorneys who worked with John was that enough is enough, and that you were getting fed up and frustrated with all of this sort of remote dealing. And so, I am in Westchester County regularly, even though I didn't identify my address, but full disclosure, I'm located in beautiful Oak Brook, Illinois, but it's very close to O'Hare Airport. And my job is to come out here regularly, you know, I have a bed and breakfast that I stay at, I don't even stay at a hotel anymore, so I'm constantly around here. My, Patty's got my cellphone, it's on my email, all of you should have it. You've got my landline phone, so we will respond. I respond, I got a message, and I'm honest to goodness, this Sunday night, I came home from dinner, and I had a message from a community near here. I'm on my BlackBerry, emailing back the community. So, that's our job. So hopefully, we can have a better relation, you know, build upon this and do better in the future.
Well, I mean, look, we could spend hours discussing the myriad of feelings, mostly not good, that we've had through this whole process. You know, my, I appreciate your guys' presence. I still think this contract leaves a lot to be desired. And I'll tell you, I'll sum it up in a minute, let me just get to the last couple of things here. The service area is defined in Section 3.1, says, "Fios may be offered to the business, may." They're almost carved out as a possibility, maybe, maybe not. Will it?
This is basically a residential product, and we do have a permissive "may" in there because of the vagaries of the bill sometimes in serving businesses. It's a special type of situation, but this is a residential, this mandatory service availability through the bill that's detailed in the back of the agreement, I believe it's Exhibit B, to residences. You know, we have a billed schedule, and that is for residences. As the, we do have a business product, we do have offers to businesses that involve Fios TV and Internet, and all of that will be further enabled through this agreement because this agreement puts us, our feet on the coals, puts us on the hot spot for getting this bill completed. Right now, we're 75% billed.
Go ahead.
With this agreement, we have to be 100% billed under the schedule listed in the agreement, and that will benefit, obviously, residences.
Five years, right? That's a five-year schedule that you have to build that out?
That's correct. That's correct. And because that fiber run goes by many businesses, businesses will benefit as well. And I just finished, you know, we go through, Verizon's a large company, we go through mandatory training on our products, and I was, you know, waiting for the hearing tonight, opening up my computer, and I had to go through some mandatory training on the business products that we offer that involve Fios TV. So we definitely have it, but it's a different, there are different considerations sometimes in serving businesses.
Well, just to make you aware, Wheeler Avenue, which is the road right out here, our main, one of our main business strags, does not have Fios. And all of our PEG services, Village Hall, two trustees' businesses are located on Wheeler. And if it doesn't have the Fios, how do you get our PEG, our Village Hall, wired? Are you going to make that a priority, the wire Wheeler Avenue, so that, or is PEG and the ancillary services all subject to the same five-year time build-out?
No. Let me start at the back of your question.
Okay.
PEG is subject to a very strict timeline of 180 days for the high school connection and for the public access studio PC TV connection, and it is a slightly longer period, 200, thanks, Maria, 240 days for the Village Hall. So, this is Wheeler Avenue, right out here, and so Fios will be brought to Wheeler Avenue because we have an obligation to serve this location for two reasons. One is that we have to provide access here for the government channel and pick up the signal, because we don't want our customers disadvantaged in comparison to our worthy competitor, Cablevision. And secondly, we have an obligation to be here to provide that free basic service that Patty was so nice to vet the addresses with us.
Okay.
That doesn't mean, and I don't want to overcommit, that doesn't mean every single business on Wheeler Avenue is going to be necessarily wired. I'm not an engineer. Somehow, my gut tells me, if we have to bring Fios here, there's going to be a halo effect in terms of benefiting other businesses.
So, if it goes down Wheeler, businesses will or will not be able to avail themselves of it?
They would, if it goes down Wheeler, and this contract has not committed us to do that, it commits us to bring it right here.
Right.
But if it's part of doing that, our engineers have to go down Wheeler, then obviously, it benefits other businesses. We want to sell this. It's not as though we have the keys to Fort Knox and we're trying to keep the service that people love away from people, we're trying to make money. And so, you know, we want to provide it to businesses.
This is a technical question, I'm not sure that you can, that you're in a position to answer, but.
Probably not, I'm not good on the technical sometimes.
Well, the contract provides that you'll support an analog signal for PEG. The whole world's going digital. I think that, as, I think each one of our PEGs. I think that as, I think each one of our PEG's broadcast areas can provide a digital signal. As a point of clarification, if we can provide you with a digital signal, will Verizon be willing to keep it digital?
Yeah, we are a digital network.
Yeah, that's, which is why I found it unusual that even you, even if we gave you a digital signal, I think in the contract.
It's part of.
It takes it and makes it analog again.
Well, I'll give you an example. As part of the free basic service, that is going to include a digital, a basic, but it's a digital set-top box, so that you'll be able to see cable TV. I mean, we have, we have an all-digital system. And the reason we do that is despite the fact that fiber is a huge capacity type of system, analog takes up approximately six times more capacity on the fiber than digital does, and that's why we've gone digital.
So why is analog even mentioned?
I don't know. Good question.
Might that be an error?
I don't know, I'd have to look at it. But we are.
She hasn't answered. A lot of PEG systems, maybe not the ones surrounding you, are not digital. So that's the standard.
Meaning the origination point. Could you repeat that, because not everyone can hear it on the mic?
Thank you, Maria. As Maria said, and she's our attorney, that many PEG systems are not, do have an analog signal. So what we're basically committing to do is to make sure we can carry those signals. But our system is digital.
And in the scenario, which I believe is the case for us, that we are a digital point of origination, it would remain digital.
Oh, absolutely. We're not, we're not going to convert it back to being a broadband hog.
It didn't make sense to me, but I wanted to.
Thank you.
Just get a clarification there. You know, we asked for a 10-year contract, you guys wanted 15 years. We have, as you, as you mentioned, I think it's nine drop points in there. And anything beyond that, you know, is required for us to pay for, I think, without any idea of what that really actually costs. Over 15 years, it's conceivable that, you know, one or more of these drop points, including Village Hall or, or PCTV, I doubt very seriously, after dumping $37 million into that school, that the school's going to move. But indeed, actually, they are moving their studio to PCTV for this year, and then they're going to move it back because of the construction. Again, I am asking you to work with us on that. You know, I'm not looking to negotiate that or, or whatever, but it seems like a pretty tight number for a village that's so involved with their PEG, their PEG programs, that, you know, I don't need to find out that, you know, come next year when we need to move the school back, that's another drop point, and it costs $2,000 to do that. I sure hope that that's not part of what Verizon's intention is.
Well, I mean, what is, what is the origination point that's in the contract? It's at the high school?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying that that origination point, which is located at 60 Warmer Avenue?
Yes.
What's going to happen to that?
I think it's going to go to PCTV, which is another origination point.
The issue is that the school's studio will be closed during construction.
Correct.
As the school's being renovated, so I don't know more than that about the logistics of it.
That sounds like something we're going to have to work with the school officials on, and that's typically what happens. Once these agreements are signed, we get involved in working with the school officials. And in this kind of situation, there are a lot of restrictions for us in getting access to schools, actually, because frequently, they don't want us there during the school year when students are around, and that kind of thing. And we really have to sort of handle this on a case-by-case basis, in terms of, you know, when we can gain access. If they're moving and moving very shortly back again, I don't, you know, I think our engineers would be very concerned about that, and would probably want to work with the school district to say, why don't we coordinate with you in your construction that you're doing at the studio, and let's use that as an opportunity to bring the access line into, let's, let's take advantage of that umbrella of construction and use that as an opportunity to build the access line there.
And finally, before I summarize, we asked for some tighter, we actually have tighter consumer protection rights under our existing franchise agreement. We asked for them from Verizon. In full disclosure, we provided Verizon with a, just about a 30-some-page document. We provided them with quite a few of these markups back in mid-November. And after six weeks, asked for where it stood, and they, they sent it back with only one change, and that was this 6-2-6 change. All other markups were denied. And that was mid-December, and we were told we had two weeks to decide on it, or else they were going to leave, which, as you might imagine, is part of the frustration that's been part of this whole process. And so as a result, when we go, went through it with our attorney, Mr. Ponzini, you know, he was, he pointed out that you could probably live with it, but these, that the contract without the, the consumer protections that you guys requested, leaves potentially the consumer open to issues in trying to claim damages or whatever, which they were normally and otherwise protected for.
One thing that we will do, and that I will do, is after there's a vote, and hopefully an affirmative vote Friday morning at or about 8:15, is that we will have a meeting, and I could even meet with you Friday morning, if you have time, or I could meet with Patty, if she has time. And we could go over the administrative aspects of the agreement. Part of my job as an administrator is to make sure that when consumers are upset with us, and they do get upset with us sometimes, we're a big corporation, and we are not, we are far from perfect, but I think competition has made us better. We have a special website that you can use on behalf of anybody who comes to you as a, as a member of the government, as a trustee, let's say someone, a neighbor comes to you and says, I am fed up, I am really having a problem with something. We will give you a special email address and website that you can go to, and you can also call me to handle customer complaints. Now, I know trustee Cunningham, that that does not get to your concern about contractual changes. What our contract does is we incorporate the excruciatingly detailed, you know, public service commission-type standards, and there are a lot of them in New York. New York is a very heavily regulated and pro-consumer state. And so what we have done, and I think here there's a, there's some wisdom to this, is we operate on a uniform standard under New York. We don't try to carve out little, you know, different standards for different jurisdictions. We just, I think that that would lead to problems for us, and that we would not do as good a job. So we operate under a uniform set of standards. But we do have the special communications that you can use if there's a problem, you know, there's ever a problem with a customer, and hopefully that will not happen very often. The most frequent question that I get, and it won't happen that often here, because we're fairly well along in the bill, is people will probably call you and say, when the heck is the bill coming? When can I order the service? And, you know, I can give you some information about that, if that question comes up, in terms of what customers can do to be advised timely when the bill is at their house.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
The, I look forward to the public's comments. I could tell you that my prior to hearing them, you know, while I have a lot of problems with many aspects of this, this contract, I dare say that at one point or another, and I don't want to speak to the rest of the board, but I'd be surprised if each one of us didn't question whether or not we'd have thrown you guys out a long time ago, had it been our own individual business, given the way the negotiations went, and given, given the way that this contract is. But politics being what politics are, and the fact that, you know, you guys know how to play the PR angle very well, we're here with a contract, which I think, quite frankly, very much diminishes any leverage that we have with Verizon, but more importantly, because maybe I take the leap of faith that Verizon is in a lot of communities around us, and so we derive some protection from that. But the language that, that reduces our leverage for you also reduces our leverage for people we don't know, or providers that may come in later on. I've had, I have Verizon service in Vermont, and you guys sold that, the DSL and landline business, to a company called Fairview or something like that up in front.
Fairpoint.
Fairpoint, there you go. I don't know who those guys are, I don't know what they do. I have no idea, no notification. The idea being that, you know, in 15 years, assets get swapped, they get sold, none more fluid at times than the cable, than cable and video assets. And if you want my unconditional support for this contract, you know, it's real simple for me, all the other noise aside, it's boiled down to basically, give us some protection for bundling, not for you, from you guys, I believe you guys aren't going to probably screw us too bad in the bundling side, but we need to be protected against, you know, a 15-year contract and who may come in and be a provider. Give us some access, some comfort that if we need to audit you guys, it isn't, excuse me, you're not going to use your legal team and your auditing, your audit staff to completely annihilate us in terms of paperwork and undue expense, which can happen. And not just you, I'm really thinking more, again, not so much of Verizon issue, but down the road 15 years, if we've got another provider we have to deal with, it makes it easier for us to do it there. We'll burden the risk. If there's nothing there, we'll pay for it. If there's something there, you should help us pay for that. And finally, recognize that Cablevision is paying $40,000 a year in PEG. They're paying that. I don't know what this un, this unbalanced, whatever, the term you guys used for.
Competitive neutrality.
Something neutrality. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it sounds like Cablevision's getting the raw end of that deal, and yet you guys, because they're paying 40, and you guys are going to pay something 20% of 17, so you're going to pay something less than 10 if you get 20% penetration. Quite frankly, as I told Catherine, if you give, if you recognize that and give us the PEG payments that we're due, and we're already taking a haircut from $40,000 down to 17, assuming we get both of you guys on board, give us the PEG payments. You know, it's not a lot of money on your guys' part, and I'll be the first one to call you and tell you, Cablevision has found a legal loophole not to pay us the $40,000 into the TOA, and therefore, you don't have to pay. I'm only asking you to pay the PEG payment as long as Cablevision pays their $40,000. If they find a way out of it, and they still have an agreement with us, you guys, I'll let you off the hook for that as well. You can write into the contract, and I'll personally call you if need be and say, you're off the hook. None of these things, I don't think, cost Verizon a cent. None of these things are beyond the spirit of which I think all of you guys have represented Verizon's, the spirit in which you guys approached the Verizon contract. And all of these things are not necessarily a Verizon issue, but something as a board, we need to consider for the Village of Pleasantville for the next 15 years. So a lot of residents here that want this, they're looking at a one- or two-year triple or double play that is going to give them a big savings, I get it, I want choice too. And so I distilled all of my angst and all of my dissatisfaction with this contract into three simple things, which I think captures the spirit for which you guys have presented this, and doesn't cost you a dime if you, if you, you know, uphold the contract as you've described. And for the life of me, I'm not looking to, well, maybe I ain't looking to renegotiate it, I'm really looking to say, you know, if we're going to be partners for 15 years, maybe we can come to some agreement here in the last four days, so that, you know, this board can feel good about moving forward with your contract versus really scratching their head and wondering whether or not these are guys we should have thrown out three years ago and been done with it, regardless of the fact that there is some public interest in the fact of having you here, actually some on this board, actually some on this chair. So, so the issue for us is bigger, for me is bigger, I'll let the rest of the board talk about it now. Thank you for enduring my presentation, I hope it was helpful and it helped the audience, both here and on TV, who we hope to hear from over the next four days, which is why we've delayed the vote. Understand more of what we were up against and what we were trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
So, is there?
So, will anyone else want to comment at some point?
We will.
Yes.
Is anyone else on the board want to ask a question at this point, before we open to the public comment? We can certainly circle back.
I think Jonathan did a pretty good job of summarizing a long history of interaction. Jonathan's been, over the years, the point person in discussing this issue, and I'm glad he spent the time in putting, putting his thoughts down so they could be covered in some detail.
Likewise, Jonathan. I mean, as you can hear, this has been a long extended process, and some of what we're arguing about, or Jonathan's arguing about, represent matters that Verizon simply indicated they would not move on. And Link, I think, is here to report, or at least up until now, has been here to report that that's the case. So we'll move to public comment now, let me just start by saying we have received a number of written comments. Verizon has a Verizon-sponsored website, newyorktvchoice.net, something to that effect, that allows people to generate a form letter, and that form letter reads, Dear Mayor Shearer and Trustees, as a resident of the village, I commend the village board for its leadership in bringing cable choice and competition to the Village of Pleasantville. The franchise application under consideration offers our residents hope for a long-awaited new choice. In cable TV service providers, we've heard about the benefits of competition from our friends in neighboring communities, more channels, better technology, and competitive pricing. Decisive action on your part will ensure that we enjoy those same benefits here in the Village of Pleasantville. And that form letter through the Verizon website has been sent to us by Michael Consani of Foxwood Drive, Carlos DeJesus of Sorels Lane, Matthew Kyrikos of Old Hollow Road, Tara Albom of Summit Place, Joseph O'Neill of Grove Street, and Lorraine Malinari of Bedford Road, as well as Maura Hunter of Spring Street. In addition, we received a letter from John and Lenore Diarco of Leland Avenue. It reads as follows, Mayor Shearer and Village Trustees, for over three years, I've subscribed to the Verizon Fios Internet and Telephone Services and have been extremely satisfied with these services. Unlike Cablevision, I have experienced no outages over the past three years with Verizon, and their offerings are the best value in the market. Unfortunately, I'm not able to bundle all of the Verizon services under one contract, which is costing me over $500 a year. The current situation with only one cable TV provider in Pleasantville is unacceptable, and it leaves the Village of Pleasantville residents in the unique situation of being one of the only communities that does not have a choice of cable TV services. Village residents deserve an option to choose a cable TV provider that will create a competitive market and improve service offerings. In addition, Verizon TV provides the best channel offerings and the availability of service for the pricing. We request you to approve the Verizon contract as soon as possible, move forward to provide additional cable TV services that village residents can enjoy. The current situation is unacceptable and will cost residents more money each year by not having the capability to bundle all of the Verizon services. No other company can offer reliable cable TV, telephone, internet, and wireless services at very attractive model prices. It's time to end the hopes of obtaining a better contract from Verizon, as that opportunity is obviously no longer available, and to establish a cable TV agreement with Verizon. So those are the comments we've received in writing, and we invite now anyone in the public to come up. We ask that you identify yourself and give us your address, and let us know what you think.
My name is Steve Halpern, I live at 43 Sutton Place in Pleasantville for the last 38 years. I have one question, actually, and sort of a statement. The first question is, appears on page 10 of 21 pages, and that is 5.11, in order to ensure universal availability of public educational and government programming, franchisees shall provide capacity on its basic service tier for up to one dedicated public access channel. Why does that not read, "for one dedicated public access channel"? Could someone report, give me an answer on that?
Hi, this is Maria Solvara, I'm an attorney from Verizon. And as I had mentioned earlier, and Link had spoken into the microphone, this is a standard agreement. If you look at 5.1.2, which is right under it, it refers to an exhibit, and the exhibit has the details of the PEG channel. And then Exhibit D, which is discussed in 5.2, it actually lists out the direct connections to those origination points that reflect each of the channels. The reason it says up to is not all communities have three channels. Under the New York State Cable Television Regulations, the public access channel is required, it's mandatory. And then a second channel, which is for education slash government, is mandatory. And the third channel is only optional for the community if they could meet the formula set out in the regulations for how much content is being carried on the second channel. If it, if you have more content than the formula lays out, then you are entitled to a third channel. In the case of the community, because of level playing field, we're just matching what the incumbent Verizon already has in place and what the community has in place.
Incoming Cablevision.
I'm sorry, Cablevision has in place. So this is just a standard.
In very, very simple language.
Standard contract, the details are in the exhibits.
I want to hear the reason, not that it's a standard.
Because in the rest of the provisions, we talk about the specifics for this village.
So what is provided then? A public access channel? A certainty?
Yes.
A certainty.
A dedicated, just for this community, not shared with any other community.
Okay.
And then a dedicated, which is how it's described in the agreement, educational channel, which means it is only for the Village of Pleasantville and not shared by other communities. And then a third dedicated channel for government programming, which is not shared with any other regional communities.
So there's a certainty of three channels?
That's right.
Okay.
In Exhibit D, it spells out the direct connection.
Just, it follows up on a point Jonathan made, and it's a point that would help a lot to hear back from Verizon between now and Friday, and I'm sure on behalf of all the board members, and that is that the school district is larger than the village. And it would help enormously if the educational channel is able to reach the school district households. In many, many discussions we've had with John Harrington throughout this process, it's all been made clear that that was a primary goal of ours, and as Jonathan indicated, the response has always been that the nature of your system is such that it won't be difficult to accomplish that. So it would be interesting to know if that truly is the case, that the education channel could reach the school district boundaries as opposed to just the village boundaries.
Well, there's a difference here in the facilities between Verizon and Cablevision. Going back to Continental Cablevision, in the current agreement that has expired, there's a lot of discussion about reconstruction of their system. The historical way that a cable operator built out its facilities, constructed its facilities, it constructed the facilities out to the boundaries of that jurisdiction. And the reason is very simple. Their only authority to be in the public right-of-way of the village comes from the cable franchise agreement.
Understood.
We are using our telephone system to carry, because the telephone, the internet signal, broadband signal, and the video signal are all going through the same fiber optic cable. So what we're doing is we're using our existing telephone facility and just increasing its capacity and adding video equipment in our version of the headends, our VSOs. And so our boundaries do not fit within the jurisdiction, the boundaries of the village. We may have two different facilities. As Link said, we weren't prepared for this question, so we didn't look at what our wire centers, what we call our wire centers.
Okay, no, I understand. I mean, we've asked this many times.
Yeah.
If you guys could follow up on that question, I mean, not 100% exclusively, but the lion share of school district residents who are not village residents are residents of the town of Mount Pleasant, with which you already have service, and I believe in existing franchise agreement. So that's really the question we need some clarity on.
Right, but my point, two points here. Number one, under level playing field, Cablevision isn't doing that. And from a perspective of our wire centers, it depends on where they lay, because part of this agreement in Section 5, it says you're giving us authority to take your signals, your dedicated signals, and show them outside your jurisdictional boundaries. That's because it covers the whole wire center, which may go over into another jurisdiction.
Understood.
So it depends on how our wire centers are laid out within the village.
Okay, so I'm not asking for an answer to that right now, although it's frustrating to the extent that we've been assured by John Harrington and his group quite a few times that it was okay. But if you could just look into that question and see if it's an issue, and as a second point, I don't know whether you're willing to comment on it when you get back to us, but if the fact that Cablevision is not able to do it would be, so far as you're concerned, disincentive for your doing it, that would be of interest to know.
It depends, Mayor.
No, I understand.
I don't mean to interrupt. It depends, because if we are already doing it, depending on our wire center, it's already going to happen. But if we have to expand money, additional money, to make that arrangement, then it really isn't fair.
All I can say is, we've asked a thousand times, and what we need now is clarity on whether it is happening or not, based on what you propose.
And yet, it might be an incentive for people to buy Verizon if they're looking for their kid on the education channel, and they're not seeing it under a Cablevision.
We understand.
And you offer that, that's called competition.
No, we understand.
And to some extent, that's what we're trying to achieve here, is competition. But if you come to us and say, "Well, we're not going to do it because Cablevision isn't doing it," then how can we move forward here?
Well, I'm not saying, that's not what I'm saying. We want competition. We want to be the better choice, because that's how you make money. That's how you make the business work. But on the other hand, Cablevision and its predecessor, Continental Cablevision, had over two decades to do an investment, and to put an investment in the ground and into their equipment to get where they are today. We're trying to do it in a span of three years. So every penny is important at this point, and we can't do it all at once, is all we're saying. And we have to be careful as to how we are doing our investments, and compare it from a business perspective of how we're going to compete with a very able and aggressive competitor.
That's what we tried to say four years ago, when you were flying people in from Atlanta to meet with us. It was, you know, were you spending your money?
Thank you. You filled it back my time. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. In a very simple sense, I would like some explanation. If I am doing business with a corporation that provides me with $40,000 a year, no doubt there are some people who are not completely happy with it, why would I want to invite in a corporation that offers me $16,900 plus in a single-year payment, three years hence, a depreciated $16,900-plus-whatever, and in seven years, a significantly depreciated amount of money? The latter two each have contingencies for which the monies will be paid. First of all, I should like to identify myself as a Verizon, whatever I am, FiOS person, but it seems to me this contract is, does not represent the interests of the village at large, and the fact that maybe some people buy this idea that level playing field, competition will reign. It sounds to me like a much larger company wants to come in under a totally different set of rules that are not beneficial to our community. Thank you.
Saul Skolnick, 27 Bedford Road. Understand that the first person from Verizon to speak directly to you is here this evening, and I think that's terrific that somebody's come. I've just gotten off the phone with the superintendent of schools and the director of technology, and nobody from Verizon or their representative has had a conversation directly with anybody in the school district. The only information that the school district has received has been through the graciousness of PCTV and Shane, who has included our director of technology in the conversations because we work together. But unfortunately, the school district, which is as integral a part of this community as the village is, has not had a single communication by a direct person or one of your representatives. I don't understand how, under those circumstances, this community can vote one way or the other come Friday.
Saul is the president of the school board.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Village Administrator. My name is Bill Flukes. I'm the president of the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce. I'm also the owner of the Beecher Funeral Home here on Bedford Road in Pleasantville. Tonight, I speak as a businessperson, talking about the advantages as a businessperson in these difficult economic times. We need the best technology that is available to us. I believe Verizon has the best technology available to us, and I hope and urge you to avail us of that, the business community here in Pleasantville. Thank you.
Bill?
Yes?
That was part of the questions that I was asking.
I saw that, yeah.
And I think their intention is to do that if it's to their benefit, it sounds like. So, but it's not.
I saw that in your bullet points.
It's not for sure. That, you know, it depends on where you are, it sounds like, at this point. But again, I think that over time, if I'm reading the tea leaves of Verizon correctly, I hear your point, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Bill Lucio, 386 Bedford Road. Couple of questions. Did I understand that the capability to receive live broadcasts of board meetings is somewhere eight months down the line after everything is approved?
You did. That is, the commitment is 180 days for PCTV and the school, 240 to build this out. During that time period, presumably Cablevision would continue to maintain a monopoly over that signal, and I suppose it remains possible that Verizon would beat the schedule, but the contractual requirements are 240 days to complete the live connection here.
I know this would disappoint you, but that means I wouldn't be able to get Verizon for...
We wouldn't hear Michelle's sweet voice calling.
Bill, you're always welcome live.
Yes.
I use Verizon FiOS for my computer, and my wife has reminded me that FiOS is a four-letter word. I think it is interesting that we have a stenographer, when probably the most accurate representation that they could have of this meeting tonight would be from the PCTV broadcast, which would also be up on the web by tomorrow, I would assume, sometime.
Very soon.
It's very interesting. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the Board. My name is Robert Hock. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Cablevision. I'm a resident of the City of White Plains. My office is in Yonkers, located at 6th Executive Plaza. I'm here to speak tonight on the proposed Verizon agreement. I'm not here to speak against competition. I think competition has been a great thing. I think Cablevision has been doing its part in this new environment. But I'm here to speak specifically about this agreement. It's a contract, it's a 15-year contract, it has an effect on you, it has an effect on Cablevision. I preface my comments by also, by putting on the record that Cablevision had submitted a proposed franchise renewal in October of 2008 with an updated version of that proposal on March 6, 2009, to your honorable board. There are a variety of smaller issues relating to this document. I mean, generally, it's a, what we would call a less regulatory document than what Cablevision is currently operating under, or the document that we, the proposed franchise renewal that we provided last year, particularly in the area, as you mentioned yourself, consumer protection, regulation of your right-of-way. Normally, traditional cable franchises have very specific guidelines as to what the cable provider can do in the right-of-way, tree trimming, those sort of provisions. None of those are part of the Verizon template. One, just other little thing I noticed, although in Section 2.9 of the Verizon franchise is a requirement to restore public property to its pre-existing condition, unlike every other Verizon franchise I have ever seen, there's no companion provision that a customer's private property should be restored to pre-existing condition. I don't know why they left that out. Perhaps that's going to be their magnanimous compromise within the next four days, but that's something that I've seen in every Verizon franchise, so that's a bit puzzling. But the main point here, which I really would like to make this evening, the main issue I think that the village should have, and that Cablevision has, is the long-lasting negative effect that this document is going to have on access programming within the village. And this is directly related to the size of the PEG grant that's being proposed. Cablevision and its predecessor, Continental Cablevision, have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into access programming over the last 15 years, particularly into PCTV. Verizon Communications, a company that ranked 17 on the Fortune 500 list, with $202 billion in assets, and last 2008 revenue of over $90 billion, is only guaranteeing this village $16,666.66 in PEG support.
Over seven years? No, no, that's just a...
That's the only guaranteed payment in this document over 15 years. This after a history of substantial support and the growth of something that is a true asset to this community, very few villages of this size that have. And it's particularly in tough times like this that a community needs to preserve institutions like that. The proposal in this document will change that forever. In addition to this one-time guaranteed payment upfront, the balance of money is all contingent, the bulk of which is a per-subscriber calculation, which is used in only 10 other communities in the entire Hudson Valley, maybe 26 communities in total in the state of New York by Verizon. It was my understanding until this evening that none of those communities had yet received any annual per-subscriber support. The news about Irvington and Tarrytown is encouraging, but that's news to me. I was unaware of that. But the bulk of the communities served by Cablevision and served by Verizon in New York State have a fixed guaranteed amount of PEG support based on community, on what the community need, is not based on subscribership. The proposal in this document degrades the quality of access service and puts the burden on the board to seek support of taxpayer funding in order to provide the same level of service to access programming. In addition, for Cablevision, it puts us in the position of, under our current model, of subsidizing our competitor to enter into the market. I urge you to reject the proposal as it is based on this very important provision. I challenge Verizon to do the right thing in this case and come back to you within the next four days with a reasonable proposal. Cablevision is willing to work directly with the board. If you want to sit down with both of us, and we can talk about what your reasonable needs are, and come to an arrangement where both companies can share this obligation equally, and you get a figure that you know you can depend on, is not based on subscribership, is not based on fickleness of the economy if people, you know, degrade their level of service or leave this type of platform for, let's say, the internet-based video instead of cable over the next few years, you have a guaranteed amount of PEG support under the model that we propose. And as I said, I offer our time to come and meet with you and try to work this out so that both companies can give you equal shares to support what you have developed into a very important program in your community. I thank you for the time, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Martin Silverman. I live on Washington Avenue in Pleasantville. I've been a Pleasantville resident for 21 years. I'm also a Verizon employee, but I'm not appearing here tonight as a Verizon employee, and my work has nothing to do with the FiOS TV enterprise, it's completely separate. I'm appearing solely as a Pleasantville resident. And I want to try to put this whole debate into a context from a residential, potential subscriber's point of view. First, I want to commend the village government for being so diligent in bringing to the public's attention what it considers to be deficiencies in the proposed agreement. Contracts are always a battle between people who have vested interests. One, and as I always say, A wants everything for nothing, and B wants something for nothing. And you have to sort of come to the middle. And when I worked in Washington, one of the, on federal legislation... one of the, on federal legislation, when I was a young idealist, one of the old timers said, "Look around the room. See all these special interests? If at the end of the day everybody is unhappy, then the public interest has been served." And that may well be what happens here, that everybody will be a little bit unhappy. But I want to put this in a current context and I want to put it in a historical context from a residential subscriber's point of view. I think the case for competition cannot be better stated than by what just recently happened, the dispute between Cablevision and Scripps, which resulted in Cablevision subscribers losing access to the Food Channel and Home and Garden Channel for a couple of weeks. That's not surprising because, just like I said, everyone's negotiating, Scripps and Cablevision were negotiating, and each party has a right to negotiate. The ones who got hurt were the subscribers. We didn't have access to those channels. If there was a competitive provider, we would have had the access. So that's a compelling real-world, current-now reason to say that even though terms and conditions might always be better, you know, we ought to move forward and have the choice. Secondly, I am a Cablevision subscriber and have been the entire time I've been here. I believe Cablevision's been around that long. And I have the service, which is beyond the basic UHF channels. I think it's called the basic, the enhanced basic package, which used to have about 50, 60 channels and the Golf Channel, things like that, which I like to watch. And recently, over the past couple of years, Cablevision has said, "Well, you can't get many of those channels anymore unless you go get some kind of equipment and put it on your television. It doesn't cost anything. Just come and get it and set it up and everything will be fine." I have tried now twice to do that. I've gone and tried to install it twice. I'm a reasonably intelligent person. I'm a college graduate. And I was unable to do it twice. And I've actually given up. And I don't watch those 50 channels. I don't get the Golf Channel. I just get the, whatever they, and each month, a few more channels get taken away. If choice was available, maybe that wouldn't be happening. So if choice was available, maybe the residential subscribers would have a better deal. Those are the current concerns that I see, the current reasons to say yes. Here's a historical context. When I moved here in 1989, I moved here because Pleasantville was known to have good schools and stable community with good schools, which is, I'm sure, attributable in large measure to the vision of the village government, who made that happen. It doesn't happen by accident. And the next, and there's a stable community and property values relatively stable and relatively good at that time. And even today, they are still relatively good, primarily because of what Pleasantville represents in Westchester County. The next big thing that I saw develop was the arrival of the Jacob Burns Film Center. Again, I'm sure largely to the work of the folks up here or their predecessors in bringing them to Pleasantville and making those services available to Pleasantville. What happened? Lots of new restaurants, lots of new businesses. Pleasantville became not only a community with good schools, but a community that now has a cultural and social base. In short, it became a destination, got sort of put on the map, raising property values, creating parking problems and traffic problems. Yes, but that's the function of village government, is to deal with those problems of progress. And so today, I live in a, I live in a community that has much greater cachet than it did when I first came here. It can compete for the bragging rights against any community around here, Chappaqua or other so-called more expensive communities. And I'm very proud to be a Pleasantville resident. And, but the price you pay when you have an upscale community like that is you've got to provide the upscale services to the residents. So I would recommend that we make that, that the village government make those additional services available to the Pleasantville residents to keep pace with the other communities around here. Because whether you like it or not, competition rules in this country. And there are competitions between companies. There are competitions between communities. There are competitions between Pleasantville and other places. When people want to come here and buy houses here, they're going to say, "What kind of schools?" And, you know, the realtors will say, "Jacob Burns Film Center. It's great." Well, what about TV? Well, we have Cablevision. And these people who are going to spend a lot of money to buy a house in Pleasantville, okay, anything else? Nope. Why not? Well, because we've been fighting, there's been a lot of infighting between the parties for the past three or four years. And people have gotten kind of caught up on the minutia of the terms and conditions. You'll never reach an agreement on that. You'll never, nobody will ever be happy on the terms and conditions. So I think maybe the better thing to do is to say yes and move on and make the residents have this additional service that I think will inure to the benefit of Pleasantville as a community. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Hello. Bernie Gordon, 17 Brookfield Place. I was the mayor for the last six years until last April, and all I can say is, "Thank you for not having to make that decision." I just want to simplify, I think, for myself and for some people in the community, as to what has happened here. I think that the terms of Verizon providing service to the village in a triple play to the residents on Washington Avenue or whatever could have been dealt with in a week. That's not the issue here. Very simply, in my opinion, Verizon has taken the position that it will not support public access, that it will make it very difficult for communities to support public access. We, as a community, have done something different than other communities in this area. We have developed a highly-regarded, high-quality public access channel and public access program. It's different. It's different than North Castle. It's different than Chappaqua. But we are only 7,500 people with maybe 2,000 subscribers at best for both, that would have to be shared by whatever number of cable companies there are. First of all, there is choice. There is Dish Network. There is DirecTV. And there's Cablevision. So it may not be the competition that Verizon talks about, but there is competition right now. What they don't offer is public access. That's what makes them different. Why doesn't Verizon want to support public access? And it is very interesting to me throughout this whole negotiation, that part of the consortium, and I want to thank Jonathan for his comments tonight, and the Board for their work, and both to Jonathan and Joe Stargiotti, which negotiated with Verizon and Cablevision for the last six years since Cablevision's franchise agreement expired. And I, and I don't want to, I'm not complimenting Cablevision. I thank Mr. Hoke, who's done a great job since he's become the community representative from Cablevision. But the community representative or the Cablevision was totally cooperative for three years. And they can't, I don't think it's a proper, you know, in my opinion, coming up now and saying, "We're going to be very cooperative." They could have done that six years ago, chose not to, and looked to this level playing field as an excuse not to enter into good-faith negotiations. We were part of a consortium. One of the things that's very important to understand is that whatever the village has asked for costs Verizon nothing. Jonathan has said that tonight, but it must be emphasized. It's a pass-through. It's a pass-through to the subscribers. And all this village was asking was sufficient funds that it could continue to support its public access channels in the manner in which it has been supporting it for the last 10, 12 years. Verizon has said no. One of the things that's very interesting to me is that part of the consortium is Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant will receive, as I understand, the same peg fees as Pleasantville does. It will receive the same fees that is being offered to Pleasantville under our proposed contract. There's only one difference that I find. Mount Pleasant doesn't have a public access channel. So it's pocketing that money, putting it into its general fund. And all we ask from Verizon was, "Listen, take a look at our channel. Take a look at the quality that we put out, the benefit we provide to a community, and say, 'Look, maybe we should get a little bit more to support our public access channels and other communities in the surrounding area.'" The response has been, "We're going to give you a form contract, and the answer is no." It's not fair. Now, what that does also by saying is putting us at war, not at war, that's a strong word, putting us at strong differences with our residents. Many residents want FiOS. They deserve FiOS. We want them to have FiOS. But now, the way it's being presented to us, "Well, you don't have FiOS because of your village board. They're being obstructed. They don't want to come into an agreement with Verizon." Now, I will admit that if you took a majority vote, there may be a majority of people out there that says, "I prefer..." If you're going to give up, if I had to make a choice, public access or FiOS, I want FiOS. But that's not the decision the government should have to make. And that's not the position that Verizon should be putting this village to make that decision. I'm not suggesting that you vote against this franchise agreement, but I think that everybody ought to know exactly what it is. The question is, why would Verizon do that? Why is it insisting that they take a cookie-cutter approach and that everybody be treated the same no matter what? And I think Jonathan hit on it tonight. If I want to sell this franchise, I want to sell with the least amount of financial obligations to a potential purchaser that I possibly can do. If I reduce Pleasantville by $30,000 a year, all these other communities, I have reduced the operating cost by millions of dollars, which in a 15-year period may make it much, much more attractive to a potential purchaser than if it was saddled with all these communities and their public access channels that we're paying for, but we're not getting any extra revenue from. That's the only thing I can figure out. And I just hope that Verizon would take a different approach. And I hope that everybody in the village has FiOS available to them. Thank you.
Michelle Lucia, 386 Bedford Road. I wanted to thank Jonathan for your very informative presentation. I learned a lot tonight that I didn't know. And I also want to go on record as saying that I agree with former Mayor Bernie Gordon.
Ice cubes just formed in town.
The other question I have, you mentioned that there's a dilution of consumer rights with this FiOS agreement. That's very interesting to me. I was wondering what we would be giving up, because my experience with having Verizon FiOS for my business, I spent 10 months chasing down a rebate that was offered to me if I made a switch. And I made a switch. And I think if I paid myself minimum wage, that it took, you know, many more hours than was necessary to get my $100 that was promised to me. I did get it. So I was wondering about that dilution of the consumer rights. And the other thing that I found upsetting was Saul's remark about the school board not being notified, that this was happening tonight or that we have the issue of the peg in moving the broadcast. So I think that also exemplifies Verizon being kind of out of touch with our community, knowing how important those broadcasts are to our residents. I'm not against having it, but as Bernie said, I really think that, you know, we just deserve a better deal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Vulo. I live at 8 Martline Avenue. And first, I'd like to thank Mayor and the Board for bringing this matter up and having this meeting. It's very informative. You know, I should tell you that I'm also a, as Martin, I'm an employee of Verizon. But I also don't have anything to do with the administration of the FiOS product. I do have FiOS in my house. I'm very satisfied with it. And I would also like to point out that, you know, I would like to see the Board approve this, despite, you know, the fact that it's not perfect, you know, parties are going to have their disagreements. But I think that there's some natural benefits that will come to accrue for the whole community. You know, right at the get-go, you know, after the implementation of the, you know, the public access channels as they are, that will provide a natural, you know, diversity of access, internet, because the school, the village will have dual diverse access, one from Cablevision, one from Verizon, that will provide additional resiliency in terms of any service, you know, impairments that might occur from one network to the other. You know, that, you know, right there, right off the bat, there's, you know, some additional help that would be provided to the community. You know, also for those, for those families that would choose to have FiOS and, you know, the FiOS TV, they would, you know, be able to receive their public access as well. And, you know, really, that's basically, if there's one story that came to mind, though, that I thought I'd just mention to you. A few years ago, the Journal News, just about the time prior to the implementation of FiOS in Mount Pleasant, ran a story about one of our neighbors in the town of Mount Pleasant, who was having an unfortunate customer service problem with their Cablevision. And unfortunately, this fellow made some unfortunate comments to the customer service rep that caused them to contact 911 and have the police visit him at his house. And there was some trouble. I have the article saved. I could give it to anyone who loves it. But the bottom line is, is that was just prior to the implementation of FiOS in Mount Pleasant. Unfortunately, had that fellow had this incident after the implementation, he would have had a natural ability to just cancel his agreement with Cablevision and move to FiOS. Thought I'd bring that up. Thanks.
My name is Charles Quarway. I live on 174 Locust Road in Pleasantville, outside the village, but within the town of Mount Pleasant. I'm a school district resident. I'm also a village water customer. And I'm glad that the Board was talking about the public, educational, and government channels, because as a Mount Pleasant resident, I've had the benefit of choice for almost three years now. However, I don't get the public or educational or government channels anymore since I switched. And that's been a disadvantage, a considerable disadvantage that, you know, has not been outweighed by the service, but I don't want to talk about that. The government channel I used to use to see the water service announcements. And unfortunately, I don't get any information from the village about water until I'm in the shower with a full head of shampoo and then the water goes off. So that's kind of my announcement. As far as the educational, again, I miss that. And I think that our Verizon representatives, when they get back to us to tell us what the situation is, I'd love to be able to see the educational channels again, because I do miss that. And then lastly, the public channels, which I think a lot of people in the room here are sensitive to, I haven't been able to watch PCTV for almost three years now. And I miss everything that the village brings on that, all the program, the content, the great material, and also the things that are happening in the village to get me and other Mount Pleasant residents down here to spend our money. And we don't know what's going on. So for those reasons, I'd urge the Board to take this bold step and move forward with the franchise. And then lastly, one of the residents here mentioned that the FiOS is a four-letter word. It's the F-word. Well, that F-word can be used great when you call up Cablevision and you have a past franchise and use that four-letter word. They'll be your best friend. Thank you.
John Crisco, 106 Church Street. Charlie, Charlie was very helpful on the Verizon side when this Marmaduke House that we did helped, was very, very helpful to getting fiber into, you know, at my age, fiber is important, to get fiber into this old house. We were one of the first ones in the area to have that. And I was grateful. So I was looking forward with great anticipation of having, you know, fiber and Verizon there. I have many Verizon products. That being said, and the value of competition with all those great channels, which none of us have the time to enjoy, is we, actually, I am concerned a lot about the public access... I am concerned a lot about the public access channel, because I'm a little confused, Charlie. You're more of a tech person than myself, but if you're not in the village of Pleasantville under the defined, slightly tighter boundary lines that was described by the attorney, are you going to actually be able to get Pleasantville access TV if you're outside the village area? Because I'm just trying to understand the technology a little bit.
Locust is not on the map.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be included.
Because the commitment that...
But it isn't on the map.
The commitment that Cablevision has done over a very long period of time, in the last... Since 9/11 primarily, in the last, going on nine to 10 years, has been, I don't know how many thousands of programming, award-winning programs, a lot more than just the village meetings, which are useful, and the occasional musical of the schools. It really has a wide variety of programs that's unique to our area, and frankly, I'm not surprised that Verizon, in a cookie-cutter fashion, is trying to railroad or push through this. Maybe that's an incorrect characterization, but I think to just as a public person, this has been out a few days, and now we have to decide in a couple of days to make this decision. After three years, I'm not 100% sure what the rest of the judgment is, except from your needs. It doesn't necessarily serve ours, because, you know, this is the first time the public has had a chance to interact with Verizon, and it's not so hot so far, because you haven't demonstrated a commitment to our public access. You don't even know what it's about. I mean, have you ever watched it? It's actually available on the internet. Have you ever watched it? So it's like, I want to see that commitment, because some of the areas that's going to be directly affected is less money to the community, which, as our able mayor said, was a pass-through, didn't... No skin off of you guys. And it's going to make it a lot harder for our community to have something like a Jacob Burns thing happen down the road five, 10, 15 years. Cablevision stepped up to the plate. I don't see anything here that says it. But what I do see here is, under your contract, just looking at it, public access channel, page number five, "An access channel available for non-commercial use solely by the residents in the franchise area on a first-come, first-served, nondiscrimatory basis." I'm sorry, Ben Sheever. It was fun. Marlene Kanapi. I'm sorry, you know, it's... If it's purely by the residents, does that mean if I have a guest, that's, you know, if I invite Ben onto my show, you know, to kind of get around it, does that mean I can't do it? I mean, a contract is a contract, and while we in good faith may say, "Sure, we'll lax about it," I think it says solely by the residents. I don't think that's the language in the Cablevision contract. I don't think that's the spirit of what I've seen online about Verizon's non-interference and general attitude towards public access. It reads well when you read it off the Verizon content policy, but in fact, the practice of it looks like it's going to be a little bit less conducive to letting the great access that Pleasantville has. Well, thank you.
Maybe Lincoln, address that?
Yeah.
Lincoln, could you address that?
Can you address that question of solely by the residents? I mean, what does it really mean? If... Just hold your thought for a moment, Billie Jean.
Hold on one second.
Come on.
Well, many, you know, many communities don't have a public access channel, and so we have what's called a tape playback channel. But Pleasantville is relatively unusual in that regard, and we're just really saying, we are not responsible for the content. We aren't going to run the public access channel. We aren't going to police what's on the content. That's really the responsibility of the people who run PCTV.
In other words, it has nothing to do with...
We're doing video transport.
The programs who's on it, who's whatever.
Yeah, we're going to... We'll do video transport.
When you say solely by the residents, the purpose in saying that is that Verizon's not running this for you.
Right, we are not. And the residents are going to be running it, and I know you have, you know, I've watched your meetings on the web, and, you know, obviously you have a very robust program in here. And for the school... Well, I'm still up here. I would love to come back if I could respond to some other things, but just...
We'd be happy to have you.
Well, then I'll wait. You know, let me wait, and I'll respond to some of the other things.
Can I ask you a question?
Well, she's going to come back. Billie Jean's next, then we'll get you.
Okay. I have all sorts of notes here. I'm Billie Jean Sorenson. I've lived here for about 36 years on Academy Street. I'm concerned... I also am a Verizon... I have Verizon internet and Verizon telephone, and I would be very happy to have Verizon cable, but I'm concerned about several things. One thing I understand is that you're paying 40 cents per subscriber to Pleasantville and 60 cents per subscriber to Briar Cliff. Was that not correct, Jean? And Briar Cliff has no public access station at all, nor does... And then I want to bring in Hawthorne and Thornwood and Valhalla. We're very closely connected, our communities. The Garden Club is Thornwood, Valhalla, Hawthorne, and Pleasantville, but it meets in Pleasantville. The Mount Pleasant Library is here in Pleasantville. These communities feed into that, and I'm very concerned as to whether they would get the cable programs in those communities. Is that correct or not? Do you know, Jonathan?
I don't know.
Can you answer that at all, whether our programs... Our programming would extend to the next communities? I understand you're giving Mount Pleasant more per subscriber than Pleasantville or larger...
That is true.
Larger bit. And they use our television services, and we're very happy about that, but we want them to be able to get our television station. So these are some of the things that concern me a lot. I also, I obviously would like to have cable through Verizon, but I would be very unhappy if you bundled my... Bundled me in and gave me the cable free and not only paid for the other two, and there's no funds coming in for the television station. I think those were most of my concerns.
Hi, my name is Regina Silversmith, and I'm from 15 Sunnyside Avenue. When the attorney from Verizon was asked about the number of public access channels that we would have, she said, "Three, of course. We're going to match Cablevision." And I thought, "Why is that the only number they choose to match in this whole contract?" I think it's ironic that we're all talking about options, and we want fair options. And Cablevision has offered something to support the whole community. They've been doing it for a long time. They've actually helped us establish the equipment that supports the whole community. Verizon is coming in and essentially saying, "We don't want to do that. We don't want to support your community. We don't want to help your public access station." Not only that, they've written a contract, if I understand it correctly, where there's a possibility that the $118,000 payment possibly not make... Wouldn't make it to us, which means that if you divide 118,000 by about 24, 2,400 households, right? It's about $50 a household. So everyone in the village would be paying $50,000 a household.
Fifty.
Fifty, I'm sorry, $50 a household for the right for Verizon to come and offer them a product, whether you want it or not. That potentially is the cost per taxpayer. A gentleman had said that, you know, in an agreement, everybody's a little bit unhappy. That's how you know you have a good agreement. I don't think that's true for Pleasantville. I think we've worked very hard. When we make an agreement, it's to try to make everyone a little happy. So I'm saying to Verizon, "Please work with us. Please try to make our community happy. You'll be... You're big. You'll be going all around. We're still going to be here. We're still going to be trying to take care of our community, pay our taxes, not increase our taxes. We need your help in that." The last thing is that this happened very fast. The document, everything was kind of, you know, quiet, because that's how the negotiation had to take place. The document has come out, and it feels to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that this is a yes-or-no deal. Sign Friday, or we will go away. So I'm going to have to ask you to honestly step up and tell me, if we say no, what is the next step? So I will repeat the question for Verizon. A, if we choose on Friday not to vote for this, are you coming back to negotiate with us? That's the first question. Or is this the end of the line? Because honestly, we need to know that. So the community can understand what type of negotiators we're dealing with, right? A. B, would you be willing, as this is the first or second time really face-to-face contact has happened, to sit down with the school, with our community access board and our community access manager, and really find out our needs and see how you can fit into our community? Because we want you in our community. We just don't want you to hurt our community by not providing the access that others have provided. So can you answer that in those order?
In terms of the question about whether we will come back after Friday, we will not. In terms of the question of whether we are willing to work with the community, I'd answer that, I guess, historically by saying, "We have worked with the community. We've worked with the community probably for the past four or five years as part of..."
Have you worked with our community?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question.
Okay. So my question is, in this presentation, yourself and attorney, have you worked with our community?
Ms. Silversmith, yes. Well, our attorney's been involved in this project for several years, and personally, I started working with the community in December.
Okay, so we're January 27th, so December, I'll skip the holidays, right? So you've been involved for a couple of weeks. I'm looking at my board member, and I'm getting...
But let me... Before you do, Ms. Silversmith...
The bigger issue is, you're saying essentially, if we don't take this Verizon contract as is, without any type of changes, Verizon walks away.
That's correct. And I could explain why, if you could please give me an opportunity to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right. The negotiations have been going on for a long time. I realize that there's been a lot of frustration on a lot of people's parts, including Verizon's. And it started with the Northwestern Consortium, I believe, when I went and looked back at the notes. And then individual negotiations began after, and I don't know the history of why the village of Pleasantville parted ways from the consortium. Perhaps somebody else can answer that, but there was a parting of the ways. And then we worked with the village individually. Against all of this, even though I know we must have... Standing there as you sit and stare at me, I must look like a real SOB. But, you know, and I guess if I were standing, leaning against the podium and looking at me, I might feel the same way as well. So let me try to explain. There's been, you know, we're all involved in this kind of economic tap dance. The economics have changed a lot for all cable companies in the past several years. We've undertaken a very ambitious build-out with our FiOS TV product. As I said in my opening statement, we're the only company in the country that is building an all-fiber network. It's a very expensive, and it's a very complicated undertaking. Against that backdrop, all of us have this tapestry of the New York Public Service Commission rules, and we're working against that backdrop as well. And those rules provide specifically with respect to support for public, educational, governmental programming, that that be done on a competitively neutral basis. So that means there will be differences, and there are differences if you compare different communities. One of the major differences is most communities don't want to do public access, and so that is not a component of the agreements in a lot of other communities. But they do do educational access. They do do government access, and we support it. And here, hats off to you. You do all three, and we are proposing very robust support for that. We are proposing $50,000 over the term of this agreement. Yes, some of it is contingent, and I hear reactions from the audience. And Ms. Sorenson, you're welcome to come up and respond again, but, you know, we want to provide support. We are providing support. And Cablevision has, you know, started out with a very robust agreement 15 years ago, when it wasn't even Cablevision. That agreement expired five years ago. Now, Cablevision has been coming forward every year. I don't know what's been happening with the negotiations, and they've been offering $38,000, $39,000, $40,000. It escalates with the cost of living. And on a competitively neutral basis, we are willing to provide support as well. And if when you, you know, if you...
Lincoln, thank you. That was just... Gina, it's not a debate. It's, I mean, you're welcome to ask questions and get responses. I just don't want it to turn into a debate, okay? It's not a debate.
So, you know, we are willing to support it. We are going to support it pursuant to this agreement. But from a business perspective, we want to do it on a competitively neutral basis so that we can maintain a viable cable provider and a viable business. So, you know, I'm very proud of the contract we have here. I'm hearing a lot of sort of scoffing and, you know, negative comments, and I'm sorry that you all apparently don't agree with me. But I think it's an agreement that I'm proud of, because it's an agreement that will support not only public access, but governmental access and educational access. And Mr. Mayor and trustee Cunningham, you know, in the next four days, will investigate what our wire center coverage is with respect to the educational access and find out how that corresponds to the boundaries of the high school, and we can give you a report on that.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch with you about that.
That's great. Thank you.
Can I just finish?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what the neutral playing field is supposed to be. I feel like maybe we could use the Cablevision version of it. I would urge the board not to vote for this on Friday morning. I think that more of the community should have a chance to look this over and decide it in a very open way.
Thank you for hearing me a second time. The two certainties in this contract are a $16,000-plus payment in 30 days or whatever, and then over seven years with contingencies. This is a 15-year contract. This is a very big commitment to make for our little society here. And there are instances where the big guys have come in and have not been welcomed, because they have not provided the kind of support that the community needs. And that is really, overall, I want to drill in that point, a small amount of money is the only certainty. A 15-year model, that doesn't sound like it can be appropriate for the future.
Does anyone else have a further comment? Okay.
I don't live in Pleasantville.
Okay, just identify yourself and your address, man.
Thank you for listening to me. I don't live in Pleasantville, but it's kind of...
Identify yourself and give us your address.
Oh, okay. I'm at 23 Stillman Lane. The mailing address is Pleasantville.
Ben Sheever.
My name is Ben Sheever. I'm at 23 Stillman Lane. But I feel guilty about not living in Pleasantville, but it is...
We're annoyed too, but we'll let you know.
No, I think you're happy. But it is kind of... It's kind of the village that I belong to, and I've been involved in cable TV for years now, and I've loved it, and I'm selfish about it. It's a thing I enjoy. And I remember when Verizon truck was coming down Stillman Lane, they were putting in all those wires, and I said, "Boy, that's going to cost a fortune. How are they going to pay for that? Someone's going to pay for that," I thought. And it looks like we're going to pay for that. And, you know, the way... It looks simple to me that Cable's been... That Cablevision has been supporting on a pretty generous level for years, and that if Verizon gets a much better deal, then aren't they going to be in a position to reduce their contribution substantially? And then when they do, the taxpayers are going to have to pay for cable TV, and they might not... For PCTV, and they might not want to. And that would be sad. I mean, it's as simple as that, anyway. Thank you. I consider you all friends, although I live in Mechanical Hills.[1732.01][1732.01](LAUGHTER).
Any further questions, comments?
Marian Coglan, 35 Grandview Avenue. I know you all personally, and I don't envy your position. However, I'd like to just point out that we elected you to represent us. You know you've been dealing with Verizon and the contract over these many years, and I would hope that you would represent our interests without being politically affected by constituents who want it, and I want it too. I have your service. I like your service. I'd like to bundle it all, but I'm very upset about this bundling, because it looks like you're going to give away cable free, and that's how we make, if I understand it, monies to support our PCTV. So again, I urge you to please be... So again, I urge you to please be fair-minded to us taxpayers, because we elected you to represent us, and thank you.
I do want to make one clarification on behalf of Verizon, because it was my example. I'm not suggesting, nor have, did I mean to suggest that they're going to bundle and give away the video services for free. It is in, the fact that we don't have the protection, it is a theoretical possibility. I'm not sure Verizon necessarily does it. My concern is that it's a fifteen-year contract, and that there are other providers that could conceivably come in, that may not have the same honorable intentions, let us leave it at that, that Verizon would have, nor necessarily the same internal controls. So I've had many arguments with Verizon and with Lincoln, and we both, at least, have tried to not to exaggerate facts to fit our arguments. And so I just want to, I just want to point out that I'm not really worried about that $118,000 the day we sign up with Verizon going away, because they're going to bundle us away. I hope I'm right in that assessment. I'm more worried about what happens down the road on that, and the fact that we, as a village, can't control that.
Could I just say something before Link says, answers? Then you can answer me. I would just like to make, tell you what it feels like on my side of the table. I have deferred to the mayor Jonathan in much of this, they've been with us a long time. I've been on the board for many years, got off the board, came back last year. So I was kind of out of the loop. And I just want to point out to you that while we had an original contract, an early contract, that our attorneys and Patty marked up, we feel in ways that were, you know, definitions that might have helped us, and things that weren't necessarily detrimental to you, but were clarifications, be that as it may. The contract as it stands was delivered to this board on December sixteenth, December sixteenth. Let me take you back to December sixteenth, it's the holiday season. And, you know, we've had our last meeting, we're, or we're coming up to our last meeting, people are leaving town, different people are doing different things. And what you told us at that point, you, Verizon, told us at that point was, give us a decision, yes or no, take it or leave it. Now, as you can see, this is an important thing for our village. Our peg is very important to us, our station's very important. It's not about competition, we all believe in competition, we look forward to the day when we have that. And I'm predisposed towards, towards having you in the village, voting yes on this. But it's almost as if you've taken a workshop in how to piss people off. You know, there's some, there's some conference here, because you guys did it. You know, I'm a, I'm a level-headed Norwegian, I will forgive a lot, but when you're coming at us on December sixteenth and saying, this is it, take it or leave it, that's it. Well, you know, it feels a little bit like corporate America, you know, Fortune 500, number seventeen corporation, coming down and just crushing us. You know, we have many people here that are our friends, the school is important to us, we have many issues. This isn't some, some, you know, huge megalopolis where we don't really know everybody. We know everybody here, and everybody's concerned about this. So, so when you see some anger here and some, some bad feelings, I think you need to understand that it's the, it's this, this, it feels a little bit like a rush to judgment. I certainly understand from your point of view, you need this taken care of. God knows, you've spent a lot of time on this rotten little village, and you want it just to be, you know, see the taillights. But from our side of the table, it's important to us, these are really important issues. And as recently as today, when we're thinking of possibly taking a few extra days to think about this, again, we hear of, well, okay, that's it, we're walking away. Well, you know, we, Link, we hear, you're a good guy from Illinois. My Scandinavian family was from the farmlands of Illinois, I love that.
And we don't hold it against you.
But, 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 but you know what, it just doesn't feel very friendly. And it, you know, we're here trying to work this out, we're not trying to drive you away, we're trying to work this out, and if it has to be on your terms, then so be it. But if you're coming at us with this, take it or leave it, these are the terms, period. And when we walk away, we're going to walk away forever. Goodbye. Well, then, put yourself behind this table, that's a very difficult place to sit. And we know that, we know that that's going to come to us, and Friday morning at 8:15 is not going to be a pleasant vote for any of us. There is no good vote here. But we know what we want is what you want, which is to come to the village and be competitors. And maybe that will be achieved. But you know what, it didn't feel good. I've been, I've been on this board for ten years, and nothing that I've ever done on this board has felt so bad as this, as our, as our interaction with you. So for what that's worth.
And then just to add to that, for Catherine, for you to represent it, as I think you said, significant, the contract represents significant compromise and negotiation. I don't know when that happened, but it didn't happen when I was involved in this at all. So it's the misrepresentation also that is, is, is very upsetting, because if you look at the people that really do want this, and there are a lot of people that really do want this, that yelled at us in the grocery stores, sent us terrible emails, and tortured us for the last three years, and never considered anything that Jonathan outlined here today, and the things that we have to consider for the whole village. Not just those people that accost you in the grocery store and say, I can't bundle, I need, I need Verizon, I mean, I need it now. You know, and believe me, that happens to us all the time. And no one, nobody, none of those people ever considered the points that Jonathan outlined today. Nobody. Nobody ever thought, oh my, am I going to get this passed through to me? How are we going to make up this fee? None of these things. Am I protected as a consumer? And as board members, that is something we wrestled with and wrestled with, and then, and we're still wrestling with, and then to get back from you, oh, there's no, nothing you're going to say is going to, you know, falling on deaf ears. It doesn't matter. I took, I've been, this is my third year of my first term, and my first or second week on the board, I was contacted by John Butler, who I took on a personal tour of PC TV, I think Shane, you'll remember that. I showed him our little PC TV street sign, I brought him up here, I explained to him how important this was to our community. And he was all gung-ho and yell, this is great, oh, how wonderful, oh, how wonderful. Never heard from the guy again, until he called me up and told me that I have to make a decision by December 31st, otherwise they're walking away. That's, that's not a partner, and when Jonathan says that, you know, a partner for fifteen years, if you indeed stay the partner for fifteen years, that's a tough decision. So as Brian said, understand where all of this is coming from. This is a very, very close community. And yes, we want to offer competition, we're all for it, but what's coming with it?
And that, that doesn't mean you shouldn't read this, that this board, just because we're unhappy here, we're going to vote, you know, and kick you out forever. That certainly doesn't mean that, because we take you seriously, we take your product seriously, we take the, what people are telling us in the grocery aisles seriously. But I would remind you that in all of this dealing, we've been on the phone with you a lot, we've taken our workdays out, we sit here for, how much do we get paid? Twenty dollars a time. It's, it's --
No, not even.
Not, not in fifteen bucks, something like that, to sit here for three or four or five hours every Monday night, not watching 24 on your --
And see what kind of contract negotiators we are.
Exactly. So, so what I'm saying is, you know, we're doing this because we think, we all care about what goes on in the village. This is an unusual village in that regard, and so that's what you're, that's what you're witnessing here. Don't take it that we're going to, you know, necessarily we want to see your taillights. We, on the contrary, we would ultimately all love to welcome you into the village. And maybe that happens. But, but I would just urge you that in the future, in dealing with other municipalities, maybe you could think a little bit about how that feels on this side. We're just people, we're like Cub Scout leaders and Little League coaches, we're just, we just happen to do this stuff. And to come up against Fortune 500, well, that's different, you know? And, and, and you've acted like it, so congratulations.
Point of information, two points of information.
Steve, you need to come up here if you're going to speak.
It's always accepted.
First, I'd like to know when you shop, so I can yell at you any other way. Second, oh my God. Second point of information, is the Friday event a public event, or is it a private negotiating event?
Public meeting.
It's a public event. So I would urge people who have some significant feelings about this, and with all due respect, Brian, and with all due respect to our guests, these are not very important people in the Verizon hierarchy. We're not talking to them, we're talking to much more important people who make the real big decisions. So with all respect to our people here presenting tonight, I don't think we have to tremble.
All right, Link, you were going to offer some comments.
I think I'm the one who's doing most of the trembling, I hope you're not trembling. Okay, thank you for your feedback. I realize Verizon may not win any Emily Post awards tonight, and there's really nothing I can say to, to address that in general, except to address your specific questions. I think that's the business-like thing for me to do, so let me do my damnedest best to answer your questions, and if I'm not answering them, you can say something. In terms of consumer protection, I've heard a lot about that. Our agreement does incorporate by reference the very detailed New York Public Service Commission standards. By contrast, Cablevision's legacy agreement through Continental, you know, incorporates the FCC standards, which are not nearly as detailed. So there are strict and strong consumer protections that are built into our agreement, and consumers will be protected. This is a very heavily regulated state, and we operate under those rules. With respect to the restoration of the rights of way and private property, we are a telephone company that has been in business for, you know, over a hundred years. We follow the state law with, and the federal law, with respect to both the right of way and private property, and we'll continue to do that. I mean, every time we go onto somebody's property or earn the right of way today, we have our normal processes that we follow, and if there's ever an issue, you can contact Catherine, or you can contact me about that. With respect to Ms. Sorenson's comment about which communities are going to see the programming, the, the wire center here, I understand, that serves, and I'm sorry to use this lingo, let me try to, that the computer, in effect, the Verizon computer that serves Pleasantville also serves a fairly wide geographic area. And that geographic area will see everything that Pleasantville residents see. I don't have an exact definition of that, but as I said, we'll try to figure out what the boundaries of our wire center are, and then you can match that up to what you know about the school district, so you'll be able to see what, who will be able to see what.
Thank you.
With respect to, let's see, why aren't we matching? Why aren't we providing $40,000? I think that that's kind of been the tenor of a lot of the comments. It's because of the competitive neutrality provision, it's specifically written into the PSC rules. And that doesn't mean that we're shying away from providing support for public access, government access, and educational access, we're not. You know, we obviously have the financial proposal that's been detailed here. But what does neutrality mean? I think that the audience has perhaps had a sense, and forgive me if I'm mischaracterizing anybody's individual comments, the sense I've gotten is that that means that there should be equality and not neutrality. Those are two very different concepts. The law's written in a way to try to invite competitors into the marketplace. I know we are a very large corporation, but we start with no cable customers here in Pleasantville. And four years ago, we had no Pleasant, no customers anywhere in the United States. And the way we have approached this is to try to do it responsibly. Trust me, we haven't made everybody happy in the process, but we've provided a heck of a lot of support for educational governmental programming and public, and public access. But we've done it in New York on this competitively neutral basis. What does that mean? It means the, precisely the formula that Trustee Cunningham, you put up, that talked about the forty cents, sixty cents, ninety cents, the escalating formula. That, that's a neutral way of providing support, because it means that if we have 100% of the market share here, then we will provide 100% of the support. And we have 20% of the market share here, which is, I think Cablevision has projected in letters that they've written to at least one community, we're going to get precisely 23.9%. That was the number they used in another town. Okay, let's say that's right. Then that, that will be neutral. We'll have 23.9% of the support on a per-subscriber basis, and all you have to do is ask Cablevision to agree to provide the same level of support for the 77.1% of the rest of the customers, if I'm doing the math correctly. That's what we mean by competitively neutral. It shouldn't mean that we provide, let's say they're providing $40,000, that we provide $40,000. Think of that. We have no customers, we're building a new network. It isn't, it isn't, it isn't, it doesn't make business sense for us. And we wouldn't have been able to enter all of the communities we've been able to enter, and we wouldn't be able to make the proposal that we've made, that we've developed with you over these past three years, without, you know, developing sound business cases that are based on what we expect in terms of our market share. That's what that's all about. We're not trying to be, you know, parsimonious, we're not trying to be cheap, we're not trying to be bad corporate citizens. On the contrary, we're trying to do something on a competitively neutral basis. I mean, go ahead.
I just, I'm confused, and I think other people might be on the competitive neutral, because it seems like you're using that both to defend the forty cents, sixty cents, ninety cent, which is significantly lower than what we receive, and at the same time, use it to say, that's why we don't have to pay any peg fees until you have a signed agreement with your incumbent provider. Our incumbent provider right now pays a dollar and a half a subscriber in peg fees. That's 2,200 households that they have 100% of, divided by 40,000, divided by 12, a dollar fifty. You guys are going to pay forty cents. So how is it that you're using competitive neutrality to say, on one hand, we're using that to justify lower peg fees, and on the other hand, saying, we don't even have to pay them until you sign up with the next guy who's paying a dollar and a half?
Well, as I, as I said, I mean, it is competitive neutrality, but it's also our business case. I mean, I think we've come to you with a reasonable offer, but, you know, against the second, against the economics that we're currently facing, the economy that we're all sort of tap dancing across here, your needs assessment that was presented to us and that was discussed with you, you know, we think we've come up with a fair offer. And that's really what I mean by competitive neutrality, and also something that poses a reasonable business case for us.
What's a fair offer if you pay it? I mean, one might argue.
And you all are tough negotiators, okay? That's, I think that's been pretty evident. And so, you know, have at it with Cablevision. I mean, to my way of thinking, on basis of competitive neutrality, Cablevision should be requested, after five years of being in temporary operating authority, to reach an agreement with you in good faith, and to reach an agreement that requires them, on a lump-sum basis, to pay more than we're paying, because they have right now 100% of the customers. And even according to their own calculations, after a couple of years, we're only going to have 20, 22% of the market share. So why shouldn't they pay more? I think that would be a principled way to approach them, that is also consistent with the Public Service Commission rules on competitively neutral peg support.
I'm just curious, why, why wouldn't you consider offering us the same deal you offered Briar Cliff? It's the same amount of households, and I'm just curious.
It's based, it's based upon the business environment, it's based upon the incumbent agreement, all of those types of factors. I know that communities are always looking at what other community, or is going on with other communities, but it's basically a community-by-community-specific negotiation.
Because it was, we're very similar, I mean, extremely similar. There's not much --
Except we have Jacob Burns and my brother, they don't have --
Right, but as far as subscribers and --
We have a station.
And we have a station, they don't, and they got more, they got more than --
But they have, but they have a government, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, but they have a government station, they have an educational station?
Briar Cliff?
Yeah.
No, they don't.
If they're getting per-subscriber support, they are.
They don't have anything.
Okay.
No, they don't have anything. That was the model we looked at, and we thought that was a fair starting point when we finally got to speak with you and Catherine.
Typically, the communities we provide support to have some form of government educational program, and that's why we're providing peg grade.
Well, like now Pleasant doesn't either, and they're getting the same, so, you know, the models around us don't, don't show that. Pardon?
They don't reflect that, it's not consistency.
At all, yeah, it's not -- At all, yeah. It's not consistent at all with what you're saying, so I...
Did you have anything further?
No.
Okay. Let me make a few comments that, that set this in context. And the first is that I think all of us have heard what all of us already know, and that is that Pleasantville's a community that has taken to what was a new opportunity for us 15 or so years ago, and run with it in the same way that Pleasantville has run with so many other things. And that spirit and sweat equity and energy and enthusiasm and imagination has produced many benefits for the community, and that is why you see as much angst as you see here. No part of that is unknown to Cablevision or to Verizon. And I think there's hardly a thing that's been said in this room tonight that hasn't been said multiple times in multiple settings by all of us. And I can say, you know, I, I know that's true of Jonathan and the rest of the board. There was a week when I counted up 28 hours in one week on this single issue, when it was hot and heavy and we were trying to get something done. I would adjudge that the village is trapped as a, as a speck between sort of Titanic forces that are far beyond us. Obviously, the cable environment is changing dramatically, and we're also in an environment where the issues that confront our incumbent provider, Cablevision, are strikingly different from the issues that confront Verizon, both in terms of the scale of the operation, the style of the operation, and the fact that Cablevision is currently the incumbent operator and has the entire subscriber base, and Verizon does not. I, I, I will end up this comment by saying it's, it's in many respects hard to feel sympathetic to either company. But there are moments in the course of this that, that, that one is. And certainly, if it's possible to feel truly sympathetic to Cablevision, the moment when they might be paying us $40,000 a year, and you might be withholding $5,000 or $6,000 or $7,000, is one of those moments when, you know, Cablevision is feeling kind of warm and fuzzy. On the flip side of the coin, this board embraced the notion of a per subscriber payment as a means of funding peg early in the game, and that was a, at the time, a high goal of Verizon's. And they presented the argument that Link just presented to us right now, which is that some money supported to, devoted to the support of peg ought to be equitably divided. And what could be more equitable than saying you pay a some, a share of the pie to the extent that you own the share of the market? That seems reasonable. It seemed reasonable to me many years ago, when I was a part of this board but not in the center of the negotiations. It seems reasonable to me today. Cablevision has, from the start of the discussion, flatly refused any such thing because they want a flat fee. And I understand Robert's comments about the certainty that offers for this community. And if anybody was offering us real certainty, believe me, I think there are five people running to it. The reality is that it's also a barrier to entry. And it's, it's quite amazing to think that this, this, what did you call it? Fleevit in town? I don't know. This small town is arguing with the 17th-largest corporation in America and a major scrappy competitor in the form of Cablevision over what is arguably chump change for us. It's the rounding error on people's expense accounts at companies the size of Cablevision and certainly the size of Verizon. And yet, as you have heard tonight, for perfectly good reasons, it turns out that a bunch of deeply committed people can take $23,000 and spin it into gold. The reality, however, is I don't personally think that the five of us or local government ought to be standing in the way of the free exchange of, of enterprise. I don't honestly believe that in the end, the franchising system is going to look like this five or six or 10 years down the road. In many respects, the limited power we're given is a relic of, of the old world, when the assumption was that the first provider to the market was going to build out a, a network and there'd be no incentive for anybody else ever to come, and therefore, you better regulate them because they have you by the short hairs. So, you know, the reality here is that the arrival of, of the internet services and the intermingling of telephone services between historic telephone companies and cable companies changed the balance of power. It created an incentive for other people to come in and build out a parallel network. Who knows, maybe in some places, there'll be three sets of wires running. You won't be able to get out of the telephone poles. They'll be going so far down. You know, in the end, it's a good thing that more people are out there trying to offer more different services. We've certainly said on this side of the table a number of times, it's an odd form of competition when government gets less support for peg and the customer sees their bill going up, 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 up. I'm the guy that gets phone calls when Cablevision changes its channel lineup and morphs more things to hi-def, morphs more things to all-digital. People who have older sets, people who have older cable boxes or no cable boxes at all are left ultimately with fewer services and higher fees. I get all that. It's frustrating for the customers who are affected by it. The reality is this market is moving towards a very different model, and a model where the price of entry for cable services isn't going to be $19.95, not that it's been that for any reasonable period of time, but it, you know, probably going to be 70 or 80 bucks just to get in the door. The notion of bundled services, as we've talked about tonight, is obviously the holy grail for the companies that offer them, because it's the, it's the customer that buys all three services, potentially all four, when wireless is rolled into it, who statistically a good bit less likely to churn out of that system. You might take the deal from the opposing provider to switch your cable and get the free DVR. When you're changing all of these services in your whole communications life, maybe you won't, and you'll suck it up and pay a little more. You know, I'm sure all of us have read about the recent arguments about early termination fees and the notion that rumors have it that Verizon and perhaps its competitors will be ratcheting up early termination fees, so you may get the good deal, but you're going to be locked to it. You know, in the end, these are all matters for consumers ultimately to decide. God knows, the village of Pleasantville government ought not be in the business of, of taking any individual household or and saying, we're not going to let you have this choice because we don't think it's a good choice for you. Because honestly, who knows? We've got zillions of people in the village who care deeply about PC TV, I being one of them. The sign that Mindy mentioned about PC TV outside their studio, I put it up on a step ladder. So, you know, I know wherefrom I speak. That said, I'm going to support this. I have assured Verizon that I would, and I support this with the same level of angst as, as Link and Catherine and John Butler already know, because of the things that have been said in this room and have been said with great clarity. Here's why I'm going to support it. I'm going to support it because you've said to us that if we don't take this deal, you are going to leave and you're not coming back. I assume that that is a message you carry from others. I don't blame you for being forced to carry the message. You represent the company, and the company has taken the position it's taken. I've talked to my colleagues in other settings and indeed in other states, and it's quite clear that that's where Verizon is. I could speculate about exactly why and what forces create that circumstance, but it's really not ultimately by my business. I think it's grim and dispiriting that a community that has done just what the world hoped a community would do with public access is being squeezed in the way we're being squeezed. I think it's quite unimaginable that our colleague communities that haven't done that are being rewarded in other ways. Perhaps that would suggest that had we put the stopper in the bathtub as the water runs out a year or two years ago, we'd have more water in the tub. But I have to say that that's the metaphor, it feels like. We're sitting in a tub, the water's running out. Our friends in Bedford have just settled a contract with zero, repeat, zero contribution to peg services. And if you think we're talking about bad news in Pleasantville, look up the six weeks ago resolution in Bedford. So if there's any way in, in, in the Verizon realm, in the labyrinthine catacombs of the system by which these things are decided, to address any of the concerns we have, that would make our situation an awful lot better, that would make the future look an awful lot better as well. I don't think in the end that we can say an awful lot to the customers who say to me, you're arguing about $23,000 in annual loss to the village, when, when I'm losing 50 bucks a month, you know, $600 a year by the, the absence of bundled services, you know, multiply that out, you know, I, I had some guy in the dairy aisle practically on his knees saying, please raise my taxes $3 so I can save money on bundled fees. I get that. You've used those people against us, as is your right. And individuals have narrowcast interests, as some of the people here have narrowcast interests in PC TV, others have narrowcast interests in the NFL package that's available on your product and not on Cablevision's. I get it. I'm pained by it, I'm dispirited by it, I have spent many, many, many hours on this, as has Jonathan and my colleagues. My reason for voting no would be to believe that there's a better future if we wait. I don't believe there is one. So there I sit. So that's my little soliloquy. I don't think there's too much to respond to, other than to say, it is what it is. It's a grim circumstance that we confront, and we care deeply about this question.
I, I would like just to reiterate that there was a lot of comments here about, you know, when both sides feel, and it's an example, I use or metaphor, whatever, that both sides feel bad that, you've probably got a pretty good deal. From my perspective, we're close to that, the, the difference between us feeling bad and you feeling bad, I think is closer than, than I'd like to, than, than maybe apparent. And I echo and think, you know, Peter is right on a lot of what he said. What I do not agree with, and the reason that I do not support this contract right now, is because it's not a deal I'd make in my own, for my own business. There's just, you know, and it's, it's a 15-year contract. It's not about the economics anymore. I, I resign myself to the fact that, you know, peg is going to be what peg is. The, the 5% fee is what the 5% fee is. But the contract doesn't provide us with any protection. And it, and I think it's a, I think it is a, you know, if we're going to take a contract that is this devoid of economics, we should at least have the protections in there to protect what little there is. And I don't, I don't see it. I've offered you three ways that I would support it. None of them are economic. They are all, I think, consistent with the spirit to which you presented this contract. Again, when you're traveling along those labyrinthine halls and trying to, whatever you do, consider them. You know, I, I, are we negotiating? You know, I could argue we've never negotiated, actually. You know, we've, we've listened, we've asked, you've said no, and that's been the negotiation. So right now, from my, my vantage point, we're sitting with an overs, you know, with a, with a contract that is disproportionately, far disproportionately in Verizon's favor, not in, in, not, not in Pleasantville's favor at all. And I think we can get there, but, look, I, I don't know if we can get there. To me, it seems like the path that I've given you to, to win me over anyways, is not economic, but rather something which makes me feel better that we've protected the village's interest for the life of the contract that you've requested, not us. We didn't want, we want 10 years, not 15, but for the 15-year contract. If we could plug a couple of those holes, and, you know, and you can actually look me in the face, Link, and tell me competitive neutrality works for you on one side in terms of lowering our peg fee, and then use the same language again to say, that's why we don't have to pay it, and actually believe that, I, I, you know, I don't get it. But, you know, be that as it may, I, I will offer my, again, my commitment to call you the minute that Cablevision, if they figure out a way not to pay the dollar and a half of per subscriber that they pay versus your 40 cents, they figure out a way to get legally to get out of that because of something that we've garnered into you with, I will call you and relieve you immediately of that obligation. But that's, you know, my take on it, after four years of negotiating with you guys.
I think we've, we've spent our hot air. Is that fair to say? Did you have anything you wanted to add, Link?
Plus, minus.
Okay. So here is our story. We're going to move to our resolutions. If you thought the last three hours were exciting, just wait. Resolution number 2010-19 authorizes a date of renewal franchise agreement. We are going to enter and then table, and then we're going to add a resolution to come into official session on Friday morning, the 29th, at 8:15 a.m., for the purpose of voting on this contract. So Shane, will you be able to televise that?
What?
Friday morning at 8:15, or not?
I got a baby.
Okay. So I can't...
Steve.
It may or may not be televised, it'll be a short meeting.
Bring, bring your son.
But anyone is welcome, and we will have minutes, so.
If you're coming, I won't wear my fuzzy slippers, so you should tell me.
I thank you all for your attention and your time.
I won't wear my fuzzy slippers on Friday morning if you're coming.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome back. We had a brief break after our marathon public hearing regarding the Verizon franchise agreement, and we're now headed to our resolutions. 2010, number nine, Steve.
Resolved, pre-checked registered dated January 25, 2010, covering check number 6547065562 has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $169,718.20. Water fund, $103,883.58. Refuge fund, $9,705.87. Full fund, $133.31. Trusted agency fund, $1,727.50, for a total of $258,168.46.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meetings held on Monday, January 4th and January 11th, 2010, and they are hereby approved.
Second. I had any, just a typo in the first paragraph for all communications, Andrea Stewart with a T. Anything else? All in favor? All right. Motion approved. Jonathan.
My water ready for this. Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with settlement of certiorari petition by Savone Realty Corp. as follows. This is, the, the first lot, 68, is for calendar years 2004 through 2008. Their original assessment was $127,800. And their proposed assessment is as follows for 2004, $119,050. 2005, $111,940. 2006, $108,920. 2007, $1,6500. And 2008, $1,100, $160. And for the second lot, 69, covering years 2002 through 2008, their original assessment was $86,000 for those, for those calendar years. And their proposed assessment drops to these numbers for 2002, $74,460. 2003, $62,570. 2004, $56,840. 2005, $54,725. 2006, $51,580. 2007, $49,020. And 2008, $46,560. As further resolved, the village treasurer is authorized to issue applicable refund in the amount of $20,312.98 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions?
My only comment is, how is it that through the most robust real estate market that we've ever seen, these figures go down consecutively every single year? And this isn't 2008, 2009. This is, this is when things were going up 10% a year, and these prices are dropping?
It's contingent on the equalization rate, and that's part of the problem, Jonathan. It's really not a market value-driven assessment here. You know, we're not at 100%. So when you look at the state equalization rate against the village's assessment, there are...
are significant discrepancies.
But isn't that captured in the original assessment? I mean, the original assessment didn't go up.
Not really, because these are commercial properties, so they are, their assessments are based on their ability to generate income. So if some of these were vacant over time, you would see reduced assessments. Their income-based assessment's not necessarily market-based for, you know, the value of the real estate.
Well, further, we're also in a circumstance here where the owner had achieved a settlement with the town.
Okay.
And...
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's hard for me to explain, you know, the...
I just find it amazing that the proposed assessment nearly halves through the most robust real estate market that we've ever had.
I understand.
2002 to 2008, the proposed assessment goes from $74,460 to $46,560. It just doesn't seem, you know, doesn't seem right. The, the equalization rate did not drop by anywhere near that degree, I don't think. So, I mean, maybe it's right, maybe there's something that the town did that has forced us into this settlement, but boy, that sure seems, that sure seems a...
Well, are you questioning it?
Worth a question.
I mean, we have a memo from our attorneys, which is a confidential memo describing the negotiations and the comments of the assessor. I think we're in a circumstance here where...
I know. Okay. I just...
All right.
I get it.
I mean, the, the good news, if there is any, is that the entire refund is $20,000 for, for a reduction that affects seven years, so...
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved. 2010-12.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with settlement of certiorari petition by MSPVIL LLC as follows. The assessments are five years from 2004 to 2008, in which the original assessment each year was $190,550. The proposed assessments as part of the settlement are from, in 2004: $106,7,370; 2005: $155,065; 2006: $166,585; 2007: $1057,560; and 2008: $1049,660. And further, that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refund in the amount of $10,819.92 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Similar circumstance, we have backup on the history of this and the negotiation, both with the village and the town, from our attorneys. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Favor is sort of a strong word.
Steve, number 13.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with a settlement of certiorari petition by PMS Assets Limited as follows, for assessments from '99 through 2006 of $70,000, to proposed assessments of $60,100 to $59,600 over the course of the number of years, and that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refund in the amount of $8,459.69 to cover these eight years in total to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of the executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
For a rookie, he's pretty good, huh?
That's pretty damn good.
A request from the clerk that they give him the certiorari to be dealing with, so he demonstrates just how to do it in the future.
Did we get a second on that?
Second, if we didn't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One of the reasons you're seeing as many of these is that we have retained new legal counsel and are clearing out some longstanding issues. This, you know, some of these, this was filed, for example, in 1999. Number 14.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville Volty Fire Department to hold their annual firefighters' parade on Friday, June 4, 2010, and further resolved that no parking signs will be posted on Friday, June 4, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the following locations: Memorial Plaza, Bedford Road and Martling Avenue to Marble Avenue, Manville Road from Grant Street to Grove Street, all of Grove Street, Edgewood Avenue from Washington Avenue to Grove Street and Washington Avenue, both sides from Edgewood Avenue to Manville Road, Romer Avenue, and further authorizes the police department to chow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mark your calendars.
Right.
Mark your calendars.
And I know we got some complaints last year from people being towed, so maybe closer to the date, we could put this on the website, that...
Better signs, too.
Better signs, right.
Better signs.
All right. A fire department parade Friday, June 4. Did we vote?
Yes.
I voted. Okay. Brian, no, Jonathan.
In an ironic twist, given what we've gone through with Con Edison, we're going to be authorizing bids for tree removal and pruning services. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bids for tree removal and pruning services for the period of March 1, 2010, through February 28, 2012.
Is there a second?
Second. But I want, oh, good. I know you have to ask me for my comment before I open my big mouth.
Oh, go ahead.
No. What trees are we removing? And is it these trees that have fallen already, or are these trees that are... We're not, yeah, we don't have a specific program. What we do is we lock in a price in case we need to call in somebody to help us with storm damage and some maintenance, minor maintenance, but it's...
Minor pruning.
We're not doing directional pruning and clearing... No, no, we don't do that. We go nowhere near the wires. We don't have the ability to do that.
So this is just in case, like, when the, when the tree fell in the mayor's car during the storm?
Yes, if we needed to call somebody to take that down.
That was my sacrifice to the village.
Oh, yes.
It seems that it runs, it runs in the office, that trees fall on cars. Bernie's had it twice, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Brian, number 16.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints the following election inspectors for the March 16, 2010 village election: Sal Talio, Ruth Merton, and Margaret Limeton.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Can we, there's no, can we, it's been brought to my attention, there's no information about this election anywhere on our websites at this point. Can we get it up there and make people aware? And also, I've had some people express some concern about the fact that it is a shortened election, even though we're trying to save money. What is the rationale behind that?
You can shorten, you're allowed to shorten elections from 12 to 9. That is the minimum that you can have. I'm assuming that it's going to be uncontested, there's only one person that is running.
If it is contested, I think we probably should extend the hours back.
Yeah.
So, let's...
And can we get the...
It's really not, it's really, it's not really the village's role to advertise for this. It's really the, it's the candidate's obligation to do that. You know, we, my role is for legal, the legal obligations that I do for public notices. It's not, it's not something that I will, you know, put it on the calendar that there is a village election, but it is the role of the candidates to go out there to enlist the voters, to come out and vote, not, not...
I, I, I understand, but there's no reason we can't have it on the website that there's a village election.
Well, it will be on the calendar. I'll put it on the calendar that there will be a village election, that there will be a legal notice again in the newspaper. There are subsequent legal notices that I'm required to do. But that's as far as this, my office, you know, I can't promote the, promote it beyond the legal notices that I'm required to do by law.
Okay. You will have a sense if it's anything other than uncontested, though, right? They have to file.
I will only know that by, by petition being submitted to my office.
Right. Okay. Okay. Resolution 17.
Set back down here.
Back down you, right.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator enter into a cooperative purchase agreement with the Town of Mount Pleasant for the purpose of soliciting bids for highway construction materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's our typical joint venture with Town of Mount Pleasant?
It's this, and it's been very good for us.
Asphalt, stone, pipe, sand, calcium chloride, magnesium chloride, and block. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, here you go.
Result that the Board of Trustees...
Perhaps you could do a DeFenbacher and refer as, as further stated in the record. He was good at that.
You should at that.
I could just give a...
Yeah.
Yeah. Result that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendments to fund salary projection, as stated in the record, the amount of $193,125, basically moving that amount from contingency into various other departments, as stated in the record. In addition, to fund over-budget accounts in... This doesn't have a total. Does it supposed to have a total? I guess it wouldn't, because it's all...
No, because they're individual accounts.
They're all individual accounts.
Okay, I can give you a total. Hold on, so it's...
Pardon me?
Uh, I'm going to see if there are any. Um, yes. So $77,518.
$77,518 to various other individual accounts, as stated in the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, do you know the remaining status of the contingency fund after these transactions?
Well, we started with a budget of $310,000, so you're taking out two, so maybe $110,000.
Okay.
Got $110,000 left, and we have one big certiorari pending, but we may, we may appropriate fund balance. That was our original strategy.
For the certiorari.
Yeah. So we're in good shape. This is what was anticipated. It's two years of PBA retroactive salaries.
Understood, right. We're transferring monies that we knew we were going to have to pay when the PBA was settled, so...
Yeah, we anticipated this.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, the good news is that we are going to table this one, so...
Resolution 19, which was the authorization to enter into a franchise agreement with Verizon, we are not going to put up for vote tonight, and instead, as mentioned, as we will show you in the next resolution, we will meet again on Friday morning at 8:15 a.m. to vote on this. Our reason for doing that on Friday morning at 8:15 a.m. instead of in two weeks on our regular meeting is that if we do not vote on this in the month of January, Verizon will withdraw it. So there you have it. Brian?
Shall I read it?
New resolution number 20.
The Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby schedules a special session of the Board of Trustees for Friday, January 29, 2010, at 8:15 a.m. to consider the adoption of a resolution approving a franchise agreement with Verizon for cable television services.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Any new business? There being no further new business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some more?
Sure. Yes.
Just want to point out, in light of Verizon's position tonight, if you could turn to page 11, I know this is a take-or-leAVE-it contract, but if you look at the seventh line, it says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, the licensee shall not be obligated." There is no licensee. Licensee's not a defined term. I assume they mean franchisee. But it's a take-or-leAVE-it. You might want to ask them if they made a mistake in their cookie cutter contract, whether they would change it or not, so...
Where are you, Brian? Can you just repeat that?
Page 11, seventh line from the top.
No, actually, oh, from the top, from the bottom.
From the top.
Oh, from the top.
Right here.
There is no licensee in this...
So clearly, they mean franchisee, and they just...
Well, no, it's take-or-leAVE-it. I'm not going to change a word.
Well, does that mean that since it's, since they're not the licensee, that they don't have this protection?
Well, we actually, I have, actually, our marked-up copy, Bernie, and we asked them to delete that sentence in its entirety, and they refused.
They refused, but they kept a term in there that doesn't...
So perhaps, since we're trying to get rid of it, and the term is...
Thank you, Brian.
And negotiate it. If we find ourselves in a point of law...
Yeah, I marked up the whole thing.
Just one other point. I had read several weeks ago, I guess it was in December or November, that Mount Pleasant was going to impose on the village residents $65 tax.
Levy.
It's a levy.
Well, have we protested, have we tried to engage the mayors of Briar Cliff and Sleepy Hollow and say, "Listen, you don't provide us with any services. Why are we underwriting your deficit? We pay, you know, we pay a lot of money for the, for the library. We shouldn't have to pay to Mount Pleasant because they have a deficit." And I, you know, and this is just like the cannon shot over the bow, because next year it's going to be $80, and the year after that, it's going to be $150, and I would just say, you know, "You gotta, you gotta stop them now, or else it's going to be a continuing tax."
I had an extended conversation with Bob Ian, who did not bother to tell us that they had enacted this, although we had heard over the transom that it was under consideration.
We did? I thought we found out.
No, he found out in the paper.
I found out in the paper.
Well, yeah, I mean, I found, we found out about the Thornwood Shopping Center in the paper, too.
Yeah. He asserted that he was surprised that I would be annoyed about that, and that he didn't think it had anything to do with us, and was surprised to think anyone would approach me about it. He represents, as he did in the paper, that it isn't a tax, it's a town-wide levy, and that the only reason that the villages had not been subject to such a thing in recent years was that the sales tax and mortgage recording tax revenue had been robust. So obviously, your analysis is correct, that they were in a bind in a budget year and needed to generate some extra money. Had a conversation with the mayor of Sleepy Hollow about it, who as of last week didn't know about it. So I say that not as criticism of him. The reality is simply that the strategy is here to fly under the radar screen. We've had discussion, Mindy had it, with Joan Mayberry, now supervisor at Mount Pleasant, and Joan has obviously just taken office, but has expressed enthusiasm about a more regularized engagement between our two boards, and I think that'd be a good thing if we can achieve it.
They also supplied us with a list of services that that $65 levy was going towards. They gave us quite an extended list.
And that list will, and those costs will go up every year.
It was very interesting, the list.
We share your concern, there's no doubt about that.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Some more?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all, for those of you who stuck with us for this entire marathon. We appreciate it.[1782.13]